It is 6:30, it is July 22nd on this beautiful, beautiful day. Our motion to accept the agenda has been so moved by me. Me, second, and I, Gilmore, all in favor. It's unanimous. We are going to start with the Fullman County. This is always good news, we love this. This is, you can come anytime.
Yes, so we've been told.
So come on, come on up. Chair, how are you?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Don't worry, I'm new.
So, Mark, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jared Valenzol, Fullman County Commissioner and Chair. And I'm joined by Commissioner Samuel Wright. We appreciate you taking us up to the top. Today is my dad's birthday.
Happy birthday.
And we thank you, and we will be having his birthday dinner in Situate, so we'll give you guys the meal size.
Well, nice.
Since it's good. So, always a pleasure to be here in Situate. And I would be remiss if I didn't bring the regrets of Treasure Orion, as well as Commissioner Wright, who both had prior commitments this evening and couldn't be here. And we did also want to thank Senator Pat O'Connor, Representative Patrick Kearney, who have done that, started in our place for things I forget. There are things I say that you're supposed to say. But this is, we're currently sort of on, we're doubling our farewell call with our folks at Old May Hall. This was money that was allocated in the spring of 2021. We had to obligate these funds by December 31st, 2024, and we had to have them fanned by December 31st, 2026. So we really wanted to compliment Mr. Drew, Nancy Holt, Emma Otavelli, your entire team here in Situate Town Hall. You were perhaps one of the easiest communities you would have, obviously, that made a major water sewer project that I know we gave you your full allocation for. And this is now an additional allocation coming out of funds that will receive back by communities that were able to utilize their full allocation. And I know especially how important that water sewer project is for the town of Situate. Job 10 years ago was legislative made to former Senator Bob Edlin, and now isn't issue that. So I know this is something that you folks have been working diligently on for many years. Last thing I'll point out, I did pass out to you folks, again, as we're sunsetting our buck, we do like to use some of these opportunities to just talk about a couple of other programs that Commissioner Wright will go into more detail. I guess the last two points I'll make relative to the federal funds that we've managed. We were able to manage the CARES Act, which was $9 million to Fullman County at less than 1% administrative cost, delivering 50% more dollars to Situate and every other community in Fullman County, here to like-sized communities. And we did so more quickly than Commonwealth, which received us national recognition. We're currently on track to administer CARPA at less than 1% as well. And that's no small fee. The national average has been 5% to 7% for administering these funds. And that has meant more money for the town of Situate and more money for every other member community in Fullman County. And I don't want to understate the work that Treasure Orion and the staff has done, well as the staff in our office, Commissioner's office, that gets us to this point, you know, up to and including meeting on December 31st, which we did, Commissioner Wright and I popped champagne at midnight after we voted to get the last few dollars allocated and out the door. But we really value the partnership of the town of Situate, and we are really grateful for that. I know Commissioner Wright will talk about a couple of other programs that we offer at the county. We did just welcome you back into the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, so we're happy to have you back. A couple, I think, that was achieved, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Shane, Mr. Donovan, that were instrumental in that, that's going to save our community millions. Mayflower Municipal Health Group has only had single-digit rate increases. Of course, I believe GIC and those of us that follow, health insurance has had double-digit increases over the last several years. We've been able to keep them in single digits. And I did pass out, which I'm sure I will talk about, the county's performance on the OPEC trust. You're currently not in the Fullman County other post-employment benefit trust, but you can see those returns. Commissioner Wright discussed that, and whatever else I may have missed.
Oh, what I never left to talk about. Yeah, he tells everything, so thank you so much.
Just flows, unfortunately. I should let you go first.
Definitely should. But anyway, so glad you're happy. You had your lot of information to be about that. So, I, you know, I want to thank you so much, and I give you thank you for serving on the advisory board. Always such a big help, and we appreciate where you're at. As I was thinking, coming over here, you know, it was about five years ago, with CARE Act and Chris Todd, and we get into this, there's a lot of conversation going on at that time. Wasn't really welcomed, whether or not we could manage it or should manage it. But after a lot of conversation, well, since Drew was a big part of it and what we should do at that time. So I think, you know, going forward, we decided that, you know, many towns who worked against us to manage it, and with our reps and incentives, they definitely came on board and decided this would probably be the best thing for their communities. And therefore, you know, it was the privilege of being able to serve the county on this council we have. So I'd like to just bring up a few things about the programs. You're in, now I'm hearing that you're in the Mayflower Municipal, which is recent. So you have six different programs that you're in out of 14. We're all here, and I'm going to, you know, introduce some of the other projects that we have, programs that we have. Couple of them are coming out, so, and I know that, you know, we had had a lunch, and we, and mentioned it. We are going, you know, full force and trying to get these programs up and running, and it seems to be, you know, really doing well. Communities really need some type of regionalization because we just can't make it on our own. So therefore, I think that, you know, it's a great thing to me if you want, I mean, if you ever have any need for any of these towns to work. So rather be telling me all the programs that we have assigned to you. So we'll keep you abreast of, you know, what kind of new programs are coming out. Also, on the front of the school, it tells you the numbers and how much we've given so far. And they just said that we need this to last, that we have.
This, this will be the last, we won't be back unless some of the towns that have received additional allocation aren't able to use that.
Right.
We will then, again, continue to keep our commitment to return $0 to the county.
I like to say that we will be back. If you don't have it, we will be back. We are always there for you. So on the CARES Act, you know, so far, how much money we've given out to you? You've got $3,74,934.24.
That was CARES.
That was CARES. And Opera is $3,402,266.73, which gives us a total of $6,475,231.73. Does it seem like a lot of money? But, you know, when you put it out like that, you know how much you've given each town? It certainly has helped, and I know the town's Kevin Kearney and has new these funds, and, you know, with these projects that you're doing, each of them that I've seen, that really saved, it needs a lot of money and bringing people and doing that out, and CARES. So I greatly appreciate all that you've done, and I just, you know, want to say nothing. And in the beginning, we were talking about this, you know, not knowing whether it was ever going to get going or what we were going to do with it. I really have to give, you know, all the credit to Treasure Orion. He put forward, you know, everything that he had, and he made it work. You don't ever have to worry about, you know, any teas not being crossed or ice cream dogged, this, everything is through his arms. We did kind of the exceptional jobs. Thank you so much. And I guess we can just example check.
Thank you.
No, I think we've, then we've covered it. I don't know if there's any questions, comments, thoughts, anything wants to share? We're happy to, to take them.
Yeah, so to that one, love at some point, we have two new members right here. Absolutely be, sit down, talk to somebody who's been. And for people at home who don't really realize, last year, going back to the Mayflower, it very likely helped us save, over the next decade, we'd be close to $4 million. Without any town employee, your exact same plans, just management, everything's the same. It's fabulous, but you are the glue and the ability for us to actually regionalize and do things in a way, there's no other methods. So I just want to say thank you, love for Fullman County. You're invited, even if you don't bring a chat. I'd like to bring a chat, but if you do not, always welcome because it's the only way for us to kind of save money. And talking to the folks, it's, it's critical for us to save money, so thank you.
No, we appreciate that.
I just don't understand, I mean, the millions of dollars that you're saving means that, you know, joining all these programs, and it's so important, you know, just to be very, very welcoming to all of the towns who just achieved this, and, and, and the Mayflower, you know, we just adding this, about 5% and others, it's one of the...
It was a little more than 5%, but, but I think we were about 6, 6.5%.
Yeah, we would have, I think, 18, 17.9%. So I'll take 6.5.
Yeah, exactly. To your point, Mr. Chairman, I think that comes through a lot of the management. You know, this Treasure Orion and our office manage these federal funds. We're managing Mayflower as well, those are county employees. It's the dollar and dollar out program at the county. The Commissioner's representative to that. Actually, Mr. Drew and Cole, that represent you folks at our next hearing committee meeting. But it's the management, it's the, it's a lot of the behind-the-scenes work, it's the trust fund management that's part of that, that communities are going to spread out the increases so that towns aren't facing those double-digit increases. Commissioner Wright did just jog my memory on a point that I did want to make, and I'll ask someone else this other question. You know, when it comes especially to the $3.4 million Aqua Fund that's gone towards your sewer and water projects, communities have to bond for that, right? And that obviously is going to incur interest payments. So one of the things that we're beginning to do, when I had some time to sit down and actually do some of this, of the $100 million Fullman County was awarded in Aqua Funds, we distributed approximately $25 million to water sewer projects across the county, Situate and other communities. That money that Situate and those other communities didn't have to bond for, you didn't have to borrow it in 20, 30 years at 6%, 7% interest rates, which saves you another several million dollars on top of that. So on top of the fact that these $3.4 million plus the additional $170,000 for any night, save a community as a whole out of your operating, it also saved in those interest payments. It was, it's doubled savings in a very indirect way, and we're really proud of that. And again, we can't emphasize enough how much of a pleasure it was to work with Situate, to work with your leadership into utilizing these funds. There's, you know, communities got created with some of them, and those projects became a little more difficult to execute. Water sewer infrastructure was just a straight shot. Again, I know how much of an issue in this community, and I think, you know, we get a little long sometimes in the presentation part, but we want the taxpayers, we want those at home, we want those in the audiences to see. These monies were awarded to Fullman County, worked with your town leadership to execute stuff that's important to you folks. These weren't dollars that were wasted, they weren't traded away on nonsense. We said no to a lot of nonsense from other communities that requested it. Situate certainly not being one of them. In an environment where there's a lot of cynicism directed at select board members, directed at county government, we are really happy, and that's why we get a little long when we're talking about it, because we really want those at home to see and understand that these are dollars that went through rigorous approval process, three levels of approval, to make sure it meets the law, and it's going towards an important project, engineering project, and infrastructure project for your town. So really, really pleased with that, with that result.
I had mentioned to Commissioner about low and low way that I'm surprised that you haven't asked for some, some remnants of the wall to put up your support. The White House, maybe they'll send it.
You have a lovely building, yes. You're right. That's good, again, 170 years for water projects in the, in the treatment plant. You can write to Mark, so, right?
So we do have the well-traveled check.
Yes.
It's been a little bit, I don't know if it had the crease down the middle the last time I was here, but I shared the story of particularly stormy evening and all the dew on my hands, and I chased it down the street to make sure it didn't flood into the water, so.
Yes.
All right.
It's been with Monica.
We've got a red beer, we'll leave a little.
Okay.
Well, the same, I guess, sure. Sure.
Come on down.
Shell scattered, though, I will do that. All right. You know, folks, you know, this is 170 that's generated the treatment plant from the town.
Yes.
You know, shell scattered. I think we're good.
You know, the reason for the picture, our records do go bad in 16 and 20.
The actual, yes.
We do have a lot of building works too, so.
Like, not to kill.
Right, this is just proof that we did something. Nice to see you. You know, we just say we like to prove we did something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A lot of those that we involved. Just saying. Sorry to take that. Got it, you all, don't you? Tell me to take that.
Thank you very much.
No, not this one.
You got that?
I only have one. Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Have fun at dinner. I will.
I thought it was being recorded.
Chief, come on up.
So, 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 in quick math, without the conversation scheduled for those people here at home, that's the one dollar.
Every night, I have a thing.
You can carry over this. You know, it's about $900 in hospital bills just from you.
It's you, so.
Yeah.
All right. Chief, let's talk about honoring Barry Shea. I want to say a few words to my dear, yeah, I spent some graphics, Steph's going to take everybody. There we go. Okay.
That's Barry Shea. Barry Shea's, we're here for, honored Barry Shea for his 25 years. Unfortunately, he's not with us tonight. He had a minor medical seizure, and he is covering at home, but he'll be back to work in a week or so. Barry joined the apartment in July of 2000, and here we are 25 years later, honoring his 25th anniversary. He worked many years in the family ambulance prior in Boston and Quincy prior to becoming a city firefighter, where he began paramedic. So he came to us with a lot of experience, and, and that, and that was one of the reasons we were hiring him. At that point, we were beginning our paramedic program, and we're in our third year, brought in one who just helps more of our paramedics and staff. So he, he's also been, probably last 10 years prior to his promotion, he was one of our longest-serving senior medics. So each of our four duty groups has a senior medic assigned, and it's usually, usually the most experienced medic, and their job is to work with the new medics and mentor them. And he just always went above and beyond that. If it was downtime, he'd break out, we have an EKG simulator, and that's why I don't speak, I don't, so I can look the whole thing up. Anyway, I've got it here. Barry's always running the ECG simulator, throwing arrhythmias at the new medics and asking them how you're going to fix it, and just grilling them. I bet he's probably worked with a third of our staff directly as a senior medic, and then others, when they're covering an off group, then others will sit in with him. So he's been, he's very thoroughly down, he's been, he's really good at documentation, and, you know, when Barry's, Barry's in the back of the ambulance, you know you're not getting a phone call from the hospital, or, you know, you missed this, you missed, you know, you didn't document this, you didn't do that. And he's always been someone we can depend on. He served probably every position there was, other than treasurer of the firefighter union, three terms as union president. He's known to be a very quiet side, and he's really photographed, these are probably only two known photographs of him in the prime. But when it comes to health insurance, from the labor side, he was the driving force in getting us back into Mayflower. Not only that, if the ambulance is fully fueling up at the DPW garage, new employees are running up, asking for advice on what plan to go on. He's just, he's really an in-house expert in health insurance. He can just battle out of the race, and he's been, you know, he's quiet, but he bring up this, and, and getting it on my was a huge victory for us as well. So getting back into Mayflower has been, we're constantly in communication with their board and everything else, please. I caught up with, talking with the other locals, and then he sat on the committees as well to preempt the line as well. He's known for his quick sense of humor. He's also the last member of, I don't have the, you can't see the whole photo, but he's also the last firefighter on work in flip phone. And when you say app, that's really, thanks for talking about a toast table. He has no idea what an app is. He's also famous, he's also one of our famous cooks, except he, his, his edge on the game is he goes shopping the day before the shift. So there is no decisions to be made on what's for dinner. Barry bought it, you're going to eat it. Not the most spiciest of chefs, but dinner is always ready on time at 5:30. And if you, and when you go to pay, he only accepts American dollars. He's, he's been, like I said, he's just always been very dependable. And, and, you know, he's, he's been a friend, worked with him. He's been, he was there, I've been there when he started, and fortunately, he's going to get retirement age in February, so. Not only is he going to be marked in 25 years, this is also his last year, so. Losing another one to Father Timmy, so.
Yeah, in their quarter century.
Yeah.
And I'll, again, I never have something different where the pressure, you know, you fall, and you're waiting, you're waiting, and finally, the relief when fire shows up, Barry or someone, it's there, thank goodness that they're actually helping you. And pressure and stress, it's two quarters century, unbelievable. So I don't know if anyone wants to say anything, or...
I would just, you know, thank you, Barry, for your service to this town. We're, and our institution has so many town plays that serve pretty long tenures, and I think that says something about the way we manage from the top to the chiefs, to the departments, to the departments in town hall, beyond. But 25 years is just fantastic, and you've been an absolute resource to us. And he missed next year when he's not officially an employee, but he'll be a resource beyond that to, again, the guys on his foot. So, so thank you for all the years.
It's my, for service. Thank you.
I'd like to, we can't be a luckier county. They have quality people like that, dedicated people. So on behalf of the town, can you present this very important, please, hello?
I will also be presenting a, thank you very much. I will also be presenting a citation from the Massachusetts House of Representatives, which was, this was presented by Patrick Kearney. So I'll be presenting this in front of the department. He's not going to get, he's not going to get out of this one. I'll just grab everybody off the floor. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks. Next, any other walk-in, anyone to go walk in? I tell you, it's not on the agenda today. Come on up, and, and just before you guys want to let people know, there was a notice that went out about poll petition for First Parish, kind of right near the firehouse, but national grid had a poll that. So that's not on the agenda. There is one for a different location, just in case anyone's here for that. That's not, sorry.
Okay, no problem. My name's Ted Good, I live in 21 Grasshopper Lane. And the reason I'm here in the walk-in is because earlier today, an awful lot of us in the neighborhood were misinformed about the scope of one discussion point you're having on parking along Glade Road. We didn't know the limited scope of that project from 109 Glade, is my understanding, for. We thought it was a revisiting of the discussion two years ago. And there are a lot of people on there. I am sorry to have misinformed you, but we did try to go out late in the afternoon, find out the limited scope. But there are also people here now who think that that's what it was about. And I am sorry for not understanding the agenda as it was written and the limited scope of that, but I just wanted to come and say that. But, there are people, and we won't give it away, we'll see individually who are my neighbors, who are all here thinking it was something we had thought over two years. That's just, that's the nature of our lives.
I appreciate that. Very much. Yeah, so, yes, we're not, if anyone's here, we're not revisiting what we talked about.
What did we talk about to you?
Like, kind of like the upper part, right?
The beautiful part is along from the gate going down to, to Bailey's causeway.
Yeah.
Yeah. It means you're driving in, go from Dan, take a left, right from me across. Not talking about.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you. Yes, come on up.
Yeah, hello, I'm Margaret Tremblay, 71 Glade Road. And actually, I too was here because of that agenda item, although I understood it was the upper part of Glade. And I understand now that, basically, for spots, that the direct recreation is bringing this, assuming it might be related to lifeguards, I don't know, but, but it did spark a lot of interest on our end of Glade as well. You live almost directly across, right next to the park, and almost across the beach entrance, which, thinking that more parking up there can be traffic, traffic, eight weeks in the summer is a nightmare there on weekends, a lot of congestion, a lot of cars that don't respect the fact that there are very young pedestrians scooting out between things. And this has been addressed before this issue, but, you know, it sort of brought to mind the idea of needing more traffic, that we really should be considering temporary traffic easement measures in that area around the beach. Bumps or speed comps to try to mitigate the speed of the traffic to the area. There's just lots of kids starting. The other thing that happens there is a lot of people in the past, these used to enforce no unloading in that area, but that is long gone. And so in addition to all the other fray of ice cream trucks and everything else going on, there's a lot of loading and unloading, which I know several of my neighbors spoke today and asked to mention that as well. So I know this isn't on the agenda, and I know it's a big item, but it really is something you should consider, temporary measures during the summer months.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we will now go to the report of the town administrator.
Phil, I thought those people were here for my report. But we'll be very quick tonight, because I know that's not my people here. First of all, I do is warn people that we have high-deed advisory. In fact, for Thursday and Friday, starting in 11:00 on Thursday, long to 8:00 on Friday. There's also a risk of, so there are thunderstorms beginning Friday afternoon in the evenings. So also to be aware, even indexes could see 95 degrees in those days. If you want to cool off, the senior center is open, normal business hours, libraries open. All normal business hours on Thursday and Friday, so be cool. We do have places that, you know. While use of stackback requirements plus one, last week was plus four. Reservoirs at .5 inches down significantly from last week's 5.5. Rainfall in the last week was .27 inches measured at the plant. Abstillion Mary was 1.671 million gallons a day last week, 1.6 million gallons a day. We're the tier two water man now. Situate Water Department is close to the annual water conservation measures to allow us to upload water and help hoses only before 9:00 AM and after 5:00 PM. No use of in-ground irrigation, no washing of vehicles, cons, boats, or motorcycles, and no filling of pools, hot tubs, fish ponds. Water Department has been giving out warnings. We will not stop giving out citations to people who are violation of water. Senior Center also, this is a two-week band, that's part of their free summer concert series, this Friday, July 25th at 7:00 PM outside of the back lawn. The band supplies a many local cell show in existence of all ages, bringing out launchers as there's no more patio seating available if the event below is aforementioned thunderstorms, and then we'll move inside senior center instead. Sort of office continuing the advance of design and permitting with no Situate sew expansion project. Next planned activity is the land survey of the storage forced-made pipeline route. This work will be completed by the town's consultants, Civil Design Consultants, Inc. Scheduled to start this week. Work is expected to take approximately two to four weeks. During this time, land surveys will be completed work on Countryway, Branch Street, Davidam Road, and the public right away. There is no expectation of dealing with access to private property. We do have a map of that on our website. Big new concert, the library is pleased with us, the sixth annual summer concert series, held every Wednesday at the library, 85 Branch Street, Rain and Shine, beginning at 6:30. This week's concert... This week's concert is Steel Rhythm, or Tech, forming on steel grounds with a Caribbean vibe. Finally, the gas company is continuing work on Jericho Road, and will continue through the summer. We do have plans to nicely to pave from Bevedam to Hadley as that project was done last year. That settled, uh, the previous caution between the area and the town by the gas company. So right after tonight, happy to answer any questions as we work on that.
Great. That band though is really good. So if you have a band, you should really, it's excellent. Question?
I do, just on the water, um, the water resource commission the other day was asking how people should um, report violations of water use that there's, like there's on or they see people.
Call the water department.
Can they email the groundwater, email as well?
Yeah, you can email that, usually just call and let us know, and even if it's off hours, uh, we can make a note of it. Water gets a little dicey, we actually have to get it number two, three o'clock, five, three, three, five. Just call the water department, or a quick email to the office.
Anyone here have a question? No. Here's the last question. We're on the spot, all right. Uh, next, the, uh, we can do the public hearing later, right? You just can't start with that, so what, we'll go with uh. Bert, Kevin, Gardner, let's talk about change the date.
The evening, seems like we were just gonna do this last annual meeting. So yes, I'm here to see if um, we would agree to change the town election next year to May thirtieth. For bylaw, the annual town meeting is the second Monday in May, which puts the twenty twenty-six annual town meeting on April thirteenth. The sixth Saturday following for bylaw, for the town election to be scheduled, that would be on, um, would be on May twenty-third of twenty twenty-six. Well, that is the Friday of Memorial Day weekend. And I'm sure most of us have been agreed that we don't want the election only on the day weekend. So I respectfully request that we change that to um, May thirtieth, Saturday, May thirtieth. And the call out, of course, we need to choose a later date.
Questions, concern, makes sense to me, makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Makes sense, you have to go after, right?
You have to.
Okay, that was my one question because of the school calendar is gonna be different next year, and everyone will be at. So it's legit summer election.
I was there, we don't have a schedule.
I'm sorry, no, they're not, they will be out that weekend, right?
On Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
People might be traveling.
So it's still, that's good.
It's still a, still a holiday.
It's still a holiday, not a holiday weekend.
So people might be traveling.
Traveling, well, they're, I think it works. Didn't we do the same issue?
Uh, yeah, no, they're, yeah, take them to motion.
Move is select quarter approved, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-six annual town election date be changed Saturday, May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Your own, I have a terrace in a favor.
Hi.
Thank you. All right. So uh, next, uh, we have a whole petition for National Grid, this is number three oh seven seven two two one eight. For two eighty-nine Gannett Road, uh, we have. The road for National Grid, how are you, sir? And just so folks again know, we originally had opened and we continued uh, this public hearing, we started this back in May thirteenth. Now, rations.
Okay, my name is Sam Rosen, representing National Grid. Um, we're seeking to put a stub pole on the opposite side of the street and a sidewalk path. Reason for this is uh, historically, there was a tree guy, a wire that runs across the street from the pole. Into a private property into a tree on the stubbed property. They're going to do some work with the tree, potentially remove it, so they wanted to remove the guy. Fortunately, we do have the guy that pole because it's on a corner and it's opposite, it's almost a triangle, it's two wires that are pulling it. Don't put something to offset those forces, put a pole actually bend, use it out, step it up, step it up the street. Uh, so we're looking to replace an existing wire that's been stuck, going to be taken down, it was a road across the road for a while. Uh, so this would be a pole on the public way, between sidewalk and the street, and then we would put in a sidewalk guy to anchor that pole, so that it doesn't be pulled.
So first.
You know we didn't correspond on this the last time.
We did, there were some, yes, we did, there's some concerns.
Yeah, there was a concern where the anchor itself was going to go, and we initially proposed putting it off the sidewalk. And because this bushes is, uh, edges, uh, you know, just what I, in my opinion, it would have been cleaner, stayed more. But we brought it in and it's right on the edge now of the sidewalk, so it doesn't interfere with the bushes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my last question, all of the issues.
And then, all of it, Mark is, W is happy, what did they have, they've signed up, and they were, they were on location. You know, this thing, the painting, yeah.
Fairly equal observation, and it's not related to this project, but uh, during ship shake day, walking down the street where you had done a poll about first parish, similar idea, you guys, they need to take away their debris. They left wire, they left all this stuff in the, in the uh, in the forest area there, instead of making with them. So just make sure they take their stuff.
I will, I'll take that back, maybe I can get in touch with the J, uh, state, yes. But I'd be curious, I mean, just for the record, there's poles that generally join own, so that means Horizon owns and Talco perspective. I know we get a lot of complaints about two poles, uh, sometimes when they take pole down, they media pole. The grid is responsible to install poles, Horizon is responsible. So we, obviously, in an emergency, we'll sink the pole, but all the electrical services, so that we can destroy it quickly. Fortunately, the Talco comes later, so we leave that, they have to transfer their services, if they fall, they get away. So I'm not sure, you know.
Maybe it's not your.
It might not be us, but I'd still like to understand it, I'll take it.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Just for clarity, for myself, since I'm doing some of these uh, diagrams and designs, but there won't be any actual hitting inside the sidewalk there. There won't be any trip cuts or any.
No, it's actually what we call a sidewalk guy, so it comes across at eight feet and straight down, so it meets all ADA and, you know, you know, issues, nice headlongs, usually kind of being.
Good, this is a public hearing, so we will open up. Anyone have questions, concerns, comments? No. Uh, I will take the motion.
I'll get to your motion in a second. Now, move to approve the request to install one SO pole on Gannett Road, beginning at a point at the center line at two eighty-nine Gannett Road, and continuing approximately twelve feet in the southwest direction toward the edge of the road, just beyond the Hudson Guard Rail across from pole number eighteen. Install a stub pole eighteen dash eighty-four, the support pole number eighteen. Install a strung sidewalk guy, the support pole eighteen dash eighty-four, anchor at edge of paved sidewalk.
Second. Five is Harrison, all favor.
Hi.
All unanimous.
Thank you.
Right. Next on the agenda, we have mine at Beach Park Day. It's on Zoom, that's right.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Nick, how are you? So we're, there's a lot of different things to talk about here.
Yep.
This has been an ongoing discussion for a while, so. So folks here know, first we're gonna talk about one, um, just an update since they finished. For DPW as well, what here's kind of the.
Okay.
Rejoining the upper parking lot of mine, so this whole discussion of beach access, parking access around mine. Uh, and also trying to get an update on the paving of the lower part of the mine. Working on that for a while. In conjunction with that, um. I don't know if some of this, not everyone may or may not know about the new bathroom facility we have in Egypt Beach. But we've had requests trying to expand that uh, sort of a public bathroom. For the, for the mine lot. We just wanted to make sure that uh, we haven't discussed or publicly discussed in the new paving, to make sure that there is room or won't be room, or that's been thought of. Uh, and in addition, in the discussions, lifeguards, uh, and lifeguard spots, and moving some lifeguard spots or additional parking along Glades Road. Not the upper part, uh, which we discussed two years ago, but um, right around one oh, one oh nine Glades, been cut out by the uh, by the sea wall.
Right. And so those would, those would only be four, four to five additional spots currently, right? What we're looking at?
So, well, first, um, we're gonna come back to that, let's first go with DPW here on uh. The thoughts of the, the install, how things went for the upper lot. Uh, and then we'll, I think everyone's here for the, for that discussion.
With the glades, okay.
Yeah, so let's get this out of the way and then we'll.
Excellent. Uh, so I, I'll start off with lot two, and Seth, I did send you, or Jeff sent you a picture earlier of, of the drone photo we took of it.
So that's basically what we did, we painted it, uh, we also used chalk on the side as well as putting concrete barriers down. And we used that to delineate the spots. So we estimated, um, typically from what we've counted in the past, is somewhere around thirty cars have fitted in. Now, you could fit more, but what happens is, is they pin each other in, so a lot of people are afraid to go up back. So what we've done is, we rekind of configured the parking lot itself, and we were able to bring the spots up to fifty-four legal spots. Now, I went by Saturday and Sunday, and I think it's still sixty-seven thousand. But what we're trying to do is just put some sort of order in it for the best we can and stripe it. We tried striping it first, but we had kids going in there doing donuts and ripping up all the paint. So one of the things that we have been doing is, on the outer sides, we've been taking old fire hoes that Andrew was able to get us, and we pinned it in, so it delineates where the parking spots are. And we started doing that, we've also put a request in, um, to some of the different fire apartments around, if they have old hoes, let us know, we'll take it off the handle, cut it off, and use it to delineate the spots. That way, without doing that in a regular basis. We also added um, reloads, two or three loads of stone dust in there and re-level the parking lot, raised it up, opened a lot of the um, potholes out, and we will. So that's the ultimate configuration, and so far, things went pretty well. I worked with Nick because uh, he paid for a lot of this stuff through the beach we've all been on. And uh, that's, we did, didn't get a charge from manpower, my guy stayed up two or three days, yeah, so they're all built. But that's, that's what that is, so.
Yeah, nice.
Any questions about that, how that looks, or?
Yeah, nice question. Hey, folks didn't know, but also, it looks great, it's fabulous, you know, it's, it's early, it's going in, you know, basically a week, but uh, see good feedback so far. I didn't know, questions, comments, or thoughts, so.
Is there room for more parking on the upper left there or not?
You know what? In that area there, it's, it's a little tricky. Uh, because cars were parking in the middle on the front side there, we don't wanna have a area that you can't get in and out by doing that. So this is the first draft. With it, you can always add or subtract spots as it goes, and we'll be seeing problems on, we'll keep an eye on it. Uh, obviously, if anybody sees anything, let us know, but might be something you could add in the future.
Love it, I just restarted.
Yeah, there's a good, like a comment, I think the use of old fire homes is brilliant.
Yes.
I like, anything you can do to reuse product that would otherwise end up in a landfill or somebody's dump area, I think it's brilliant.
You know, it's, it's funny.
Congratulations there, everybody involved with that.
I, I saw that when I went to Grand Canyon, that's how they delineated their parking lot, so, you know, I was, I was thinking it's a good idea. And what we're gonna do in the winter is we're just gonna wind up shutting that parking lot down, um, and just keeping people out of it, because um, we used to plow that lot. And the problem is, we'll be ripping everything out, review that, so we'll just, we'll shut it down, keep people out there.
Thank you to the Eastern Fire Department for the, uh.
The only question I have is in, in the middle, are there barriers in the middle that are saying there are concrete barriers in the center area, so that it.
Correct.
So they're in the.
Yep, now, the one thing we haven't done is, um, my guys probably would have killed me, but we haven't found a rebar into the two side pavements yet. Uh, just for the reason, it's just too hot, and uh.
Let's see how it works first before we start.
Before, yeah, we might be able to move things around, because once we put it, it's pretty perfect.
That's good. Questions, comments, um, yes, sorry, and just, I always forget to do this, but just name and address for the record.
Ted Good, twenty-one Grasshopper Lane. Any idea on storm surges, high tides, where, what common point do you back it, or is it, uh, is it the same as it was and gone through this, their king tide cycles we did last week?
We um, typically haven't had any major issues over there with the high tide cycles, and by raising the two or three loads material, remember the height goes up every time we add to it. Um, some of that other area in fact, that Preya brought up, I mean, we'd love to push some of that out, expand the parking lot a little bit, but uh, this conservation research is up.
All right. Okay, that moved to the uh, the lower lot, I forgot. Kayak, we'll, we'll get to the lower lot first.
Okay, uh, so we can talk about lot one, and Seth, we have another plan for that that uh, Jeff had sent you. Thank you, excellent. So this is the design, um, for the lot one parking lot, and that will change, it will go from now, it has twenty-nine legal spots. The new configuration has fifty-four legal spots, and it adds a handicap parking spot area. Um, it also includes the addition of storm scepter for improved drainage, so the drainage that goes out there, um, will have primary treatment, tertiary treatment, as it goes through the storm scepter. And uh, that's pretty much set up. The grades are coming up to a point, we can't raise it too much, we used to have to stay within the restrictions, but we're also gonna put granite curb around the side. And the advantage of the granite curb adds an extra six inches of elevation, keep the water out, so it doesn't keep tide or something out back. So that's all vertical granite curb, six inch and curvy.
And what's the kayak launch, what does it say, launch to remain, oh.
I didn't say, a safety, uh.
So there's a kayak, a handrail.
Yeah.
There's a kayak launch that was put together by the Boy Scouts a few years ago.
Yeah.
And some of it's kind of eroding the bank. We were planning on leaving that, um, and we had some discussions back and forth internally about that. So, yeah, again, we're open to suggestions, it's something that they talked conservation, but I won't be getting out of this. So, schedule wise, everybody's asking, where is this? The plan is about ninety-five percent complete. We have our final markup version that we're sending out to the engineer who put this together. So our plan is to go out to bid on it, um, and the bid date for a general bid is, we're, right now, we're kind of to the schedule, the August twenty-fifth. So if we do the bid opening August twenty-fifth, we'll probably be to you guys a week after, and uh, get a good job. And once we get approval, um, we'll get the contract to go ahead, and you can probably finish, you know, depending on how the weather holds up, you could finish in late December, or early spring next year, if all works out fine.
All right. Um, and then bathroom facilities, right now, I know we're not planning yet for the larger, I mean, it takes usually two spaces. Where, where could, yes, we did, uh, we may or may not, I don't know what it said, where could that go?
It loses at least two spaces in there, depending on where you want to put it. The other issue for that parking lot, there's no water or electricity in there. So we have to run electrical lines, water lines in there. Easy thing about Egypt, the reason we picked it, is that it's sort of complex station, we don't have the water, electricity. So. We could put something in there. We can look at it, but you're all going to put space, depending on how you put it. I think two spaces, if you put it kind of in the angled spaces, probably three if you put it in those spaces at the back, straight across the back.
For the parking, the, kind of right now?
There is a quad body, yes.
In that front row?
Yeah, in the corner there. Yeah, like go down, down.
So it's influenced, influenced.
Yeah, that corner.
Like that corner.
Other corner, yes. That corner. That's where they are now.
Yep.
Where they wanted.
So the additional parking is coming from that space up there.
Up there as well as reconfiguring the parking lots.
That's great. All right.
This will be your next discussion. See what the current lifeguard spot is. I'll let you propose on that. Near the bottom.
Right there?
Right there. Like behind home.
Mine's spots.
All right. All right. Questions on this? Yes, we have a couple. Yeah, there you go. Uh, sir, in the, in the hat.
Robert from Blade Road. Kevin, I know you probably got a question about the, for, but the dilapidated dockage and. Those and then the dilapidated road shafts that currently was illegally built on Mount Marquee. Are, are those being removed?
So right now, if you look on the western side of the top, yeah, it's actually the northern side, top section. There is a very long shed that was built there illegally. There is materials in there. Somebody asked, we've requested it to be removed multiple times. It hasn't occurred yet. I'm going to build this and my feeling at this point now is I'm not going to knock those over. We'll be so, or something to that effect. We'll deal with that as it goes at least again. I don't know what they're storing in it and I don't just want to clear anything out and damage personal property.
How about the dockage?
So if, so there is some miscellaneous, I think, pieces of wood and stuff like that that's there.
It's a fallen dock.
We would, we would clean up. What we could. I mean, obviously I can't go in there with a machine and dig that whole area out because it's in, uh, conservation protected land as well. So I think we get into permits and everything else. We will clean up everything we can to make it safe. But I can't promise you we're going to pay for it.
Another angle.
Beth in the ground, she's over there. So I just want to clarify, so we've got twenty-five spaces, can we use this as a six?
Right now, we technically, we believe we have twenty-nine legal spots there and it will jump up to approximately four spots.
That being lost now. All right. Now we will go back to that submit. Yeah. Much, you kind of talked a little bit about, what was it, you're on mute. On some things that have happened. The lifeguard and the lifeguard spots this year. I know we've had some.
Yeah, so we're having. Yep, we're having some issues with residents and whoever just parking in the spots. Whether it be at the beginning of the day or when the lifeguards go to lunch. About half the spots are being taken. Some of these people have beach stickers, some of them don't. I don't think it's an enforcement issue because even though we are ticketing them. They are remaining there throughout the day and it's really tough to get a. Say a tow truck in there because it's so tight to get these cars out of, out of there. So our lifeguards are coming back from lunch. You know, not having adequate parking, circling the whole entire minehead area for fifteen, twenty minutes. And now it's becoming a safety issue. Because we can't get back to the beach in a, in a good amount of time. So we're trying to find other options to help us out. And the glades area is def, could potentially be an option. And this would only be for four to five spots. And so, yeah, I, I definitely think it would help if, if that would be something that would be an option for us.
So, so the area, again, just so close enough to the area. Seth, do you have that Google map? Area. One. Sure, yeah.
Why don't they just put cones in their parking spaces until they come back from lunch?
They do.
So we do, we do.
And people drive over them?
They go, we're moving. Yeah, we're, we're sawmores, that's how, sawmores. It happens in Egypt too. Not a big issue with Peggy so much, but it does happen in Egypt. But Egypt, we got to get about it and we can get about it.
And again, it's, it would be very minimal parking. It's just a, it's, it would just be a, you know, a spot for lifeguards only. And so I don't, I don't think it will be an issue with. You know, other people trying to park there and it's, it's not too much of a walk for them.
All right, so. So a couple of, so, so. Kevin, come back to you. Now, we worked on that sea wall, what was it, ten, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years ago? On that sea wall?
Probably about twelve to thirteen years ago. We worked on the sea wall. We also, we did the outside of the revetment there. We made repairs on that, final repairs. And then we replaced the water line and then we also repaved the road and then after one storm, we had, I believe we had to repaint the road again. And we added granite curb on the side and stabilized the road.
So put this picture, this is a way better picture. Which one do you want? The one in our practice?
Same, same area.
Same, yeah, it's different time.
So.
Can you clarify exactly with area and? Yeah, I think if you have this picture.
It's, it's, it's closest, it's close to the, I believe it's where the guardrail is. I think it's near one oh nine. That's correct.
How far is it going to go down? So that's, so that's the discussion tonight to see what we're. There's a couple things. So I think Chief is the, you have the city chief in the back and DPW here. So we asked them, all in A, is it safe to have some spots over there? B, they turn around and how many do we actually think that, that we can get there? And so I guess the first question is, I believe, I believe, hold on, hold on. We asked. Our police chief might be able to weigh in if. If we did put spots over there, what, what your thoughts are on people backing out, getting over there. Is there enough room? For fire trucks to get by? Is there enough room? For cruisers? Is it wide enough? Because that's the real, so that's, this is why it's different than further up on where it's. Uh, Chief, do you want to hear your thoughts?
I think the area that we're talking about, which hopefully it'll be. Probably be able to clean these things out. So I think there's ample room in terms of parking spaces there. It's not a key roadway to get fire at rest by cars in the by. Kevin might be able to be better at using actual. I think you're also talking about limited spaces for this space.
Yep.
So you're talking about lifeguard only. So it's a little bit different than. And he pulls up in a Suburban and is gonna unload eight kids into the middle of the roadway. You could be hit up to the sea wall, you're caught, have a lot of people come and go, you're at the same car. I think he's, Nick is asking for, he's asking for five cars. One of the other differences that brought up in terms of enforcement also is looking at less currently on the books right now. So Nick had said, you know, we can take vehicles that are in parking, in parking lot, but we're not holding them out of there. So they're going to stay there. Blades Road as it is right now, the length of it and that under designated spot is a tow site. So one of the things you might look at this is deciding forward with lifeguard only spots. Many times in the time of year, but that also would involve that tow area. So that can be expanded. So if somebody comes along. Are some lifeguards caught? And then maybe you have the ability to, so that's.
So we're going to go to thoughts on the board first. And we're interested, we're in a schedule to talk. But let's, there's, talk, talk in general about the whole philosophy.
Yeah, so, so in general, my thoughts are, first of all, that the purpose of trying to discuss parking spots for lifeguards is a safety issue. We talked about safety of kids. We talked about it already tonight at the other sections, Blades Road. But we're talking about getting lifeguards back to the beach. We're talking about a safety issue. I'm sure Nick had probably quoted. How many situations lifeguards have already been in at this point this summer? So, so this isn't just a parking issue alone. It's a safety issue. So it's not that we're not taking into account that there might be children on scooters in a roadway or that we're not talking about whether or not there's safety access. We are trying to take those things into account. That's why we have our representatives from our departments here tonight. Second thing I would look at is that, to clarify in case it hasn't heard the sense of times, that, that we're looking specifically at lifeguarding all the spots. I'm sure I already heard some chuckles that people agree that doesn't matter what right in the spot, there'll probably be some people that want to take those at lunch anyway. I may even certain stairs have heard that. But at least we're trying our best to very separately delineate those four or five spots as opposed to having them in the main parking lot. Where everyone is going and searching for spaces. There's, there's really nobody going all the way down to the ends of Blades Road to look parking spaces because there aren't none there right now. There's only open space where it's already a tow site. Third thing I would say is that in that section of Blades Road, I'm one of knocking down. If we were talking about parking enforcement in terms of trying to, to enforce parking better. As Nick stated, it's not really so much an enforcement issue as a can't tow them in the lot issue. And I think we do want to be cautious here to both respect our residents and their guests as well as to enforce our own parking laws. Because I'm sure for some of those people here tonight that might live up there. You have guests that come and visit and you don't all have three or four parking spaces in your driveway or under your homes. And for those people that want to have a park here or want to have guests. I can talk, I can ask the chief this question, but I don't think we actively ticket every day up in that region if it looks like there are one or two cars that are guests. If we have to start looking at this as an active enforcement zone. And the residents want us to be cautious about enforcing parking laws. That probably means all of your guests are going to get taken to their tow. And that's not a threat. I'm just saying. Be thoughtful of the balance point between having guests, having residents have extra space for extra cars. Where there's no lines and no parking, you know, real active enforcement as opposed to the lots which do have active enforcement at a daily basis all season. Versus trying to really try to hardcore regulate it and what you get caught up in that. So it's, it's a balance point. That, that's one thought I have there. For the. For the lifeguard spots that we're proposing to put up there. Somebody mentioned attendants. Attendants cost a lot more money. The lifeguards cost a lot of money. That money's going to have to come from somewhere. So a bunch of anything for everything is something we have to think about in every aspect. Hiring, you know, two attendants for, for that lot and the lower lot that they're getting, it's a five, six month season. There's going to be a lot of extra budget costs. And I don't know, it's up to the chief, but it's not coming back to me to score up with that.
We're here and then.
I actually had a question for the chief. Okay, so Blades Road further down near the old post office, there's parking there. But there's not parking up here. And there's like, it's wider here. So why is there not parking there, but there is, you know, the postal?
So, so I'll give you a couple of different. Parking is looking at the schedule policy right now, so sixty-eight, one and two Blades Road. On the east side, that's a lot of parking. One hour parking, it's supposed to be three minutes blocks. There were three fifteen minutes blocks. And so when you go back to kind of history of minehead, when you, when the shore was there.
Right, right.
Was there, you had different things that have kind of evolved over time. Minehead, it's, you've got all those different things. I think that probably isn't historically applied there.
Okay.
If hardly we get down further, I think only in terms of time to the roadway and they have the roadway has probably changed somewhat. And the sea walls changed, post one seventy-eight. So some of the history that's here is probably following us forward and this is an opportunity to now put that. Those fifteen minutes blocks that are there that were previously in the post office, maybe those could be a little bit different. But I think like the, Nico indeed as well. He tried to be ambitious about what our parking enforcement looks like. We understand that there are residents who live there. At the Blades, in the middle of Blades or in a lot of other places, a lot of parking throughout the city. So if we look at those five minutes blocks, there's parking available there. Nobody wants those. And I think it is important as we put down further on Blades, if we look at that, uh, the land cards. To make sure that we can enforce that very clearly posted. Like that lifeguard, lifeguard car only be the. And I solved some problems.
Yeah, so to follow up on that point and the lifeguard spots being where they are now in the current lot. Make sure I'm correct on this. It's very difficult for us to consider towing them to make space for lifeguards to come back. If we move them to the Blades section, they're towable. We, we can easily go in and tow people out of those four spaces. That's one of the reasons. From moving them out of that lot. The other question I did have to the chief was currently in that lot, it's difficult to tow them. Do we in town ever use boots instead of towing?
It's not something that I, I'll leave that as well, putting it on. And again, within that lot, we're really hanging our hat on. It's a waterfront area to put in the parking area on versus it's not, it's total area of us working saying that, yeah, it's a. There's truly, I rather ask, can't get in there or stuff. So if, if we're going to start talking more about towing, it would be definitely very good if we can leave that in the schedule that we can then leave this.
I don't think towing in a car makes it any easier for a lifeguard to get back from lunch. I'm just asking whether we have.
And I think to that point too, if you can address this on the run, it helps. Because even the idea that they'll tow a car out of that parking lot, the lifeguard still has nowhere to park.
Yeah.
So we're now following tow truck, waiting for the tow truck, right, tow truck coming in. All the while, normally it's lifeguard on the beach, then we've got a police officer. They are standing by waiting for all of that to happen.
Now a little. Let's jump into that number later. Captain Hall with forty-seven sixty-four. Just to say in a presentation to the parking for nine nine Blades Road and none past it. Once you get past that, there's no place to turn around. So before there, there's a turn around right there. Essentially you run into a bomb and that was the never any parking. And then the other part I just want to ask is, we're redesigning that main lot back in thirty-six. Yeah, we're keeping the lifeguard spots in the same untold space. I mean, we will have to do what global areas in law. The. Again, the whole, the whole, even in that sort of a lot, it's going to be difficult. And also we want to make sure that this year, I want to get the phone call gem. That some lifeguard can be there and some take out our, I'm not a. Yes. I want to make sure that also.
It does mean a lot of the parking lot on the other side of that lot, it makes it very hard to get a truck in there full of power.
I understand. I just feel like there could be, you just move, it seems like these lifeguard spots, some of them are moved. But there should be a solution where it can be moved. Like our post office or a more total space than on these fifteen blocks.
Yeah. We're just talking about a solution here.
Yeah, fine work.
Yep.
Would you consider putting one of the lifeguard spots up by the gate? Taking one of those four spots that are there and just making one of the lifeguard spot? Because it would make it easy for the lifeguard there to actually cover most of the beach there that has no lifeguard coverage at all. All of the lifeguards are down at well wrong. And there's a huge amount of people, especially with the new beach down there. If you were to take one of those spots there, it might be, it might be an option to think about in their towable.
Hey, listen. I'll say first, I understand that. I also think, I mean, let's break the ice, whoever you are. It's whatever you want to have spots along that sea wall.
I mean, in, in right beside the gate, those four little spots.
So I mean, part of this is, as a town. That's, that's room and space for us to use. So whether or not we think that's appropriate, maybe more.
Maybe.
Maybe ten. Maybe people with other resident stickers.
No, I'm, I'm.
Well, that's, that's still on the table.
Okay, I'm not articulating myself as well as I'd like to. I'm saying the existing spots there to the left of the gate, right at the corner. Dedicating one of those. Dedicating one of those at the gate, way up there, making one of those lifeguard spot, and then letting some of those lifeguards work for the rest of that beach up from Well Rock, which has had no lifeguard coverage for ten years. That's where everybody is.
Yeah, one of, one of the issues is, uh, storage of the equipment. We can't have the lifeguards hauling equipment down near the, you know, the main entrance of Minnetonka, all the way down to that Ganet entrance. It's, uh, it's, it's not feasible at, at this time. There's also an issue when it's, you know, when it's high tide, most of that beach in the middle, um, there's not a lot of room for them to be at. Um, there's definitely some room for them to be at where that entrance is. Um, but at the time, there's, there's nowhere for us to put the equipment, and so that's another.
Yeah, just to, just to push back a little bit on that.
Yep.
There's always was lifeguard coverage down there. Even though there's sometimes, even though sometimes there's not enough beach right in front of the old Clipper State Road.
So.
And if you were to take one of those, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you gotta put with the chair.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. So, you would, you would have to hire multiple additional lifeguards, can't put a lifeguard down by itself. So you'd have to two, three lifeguards down there, Nick, additional lifeguards?
We would, we would definitely have to hire, I mean, we're talking, we have four or five of there, four or five there right now. We'd probably have to hire eight or nine, I'd say, for Minnetonka.
So, sorry. All right, so I understand, so again, we're here, how we're gonna put spots, uh, along with all there, or not? Or decided to move them and then just jump in here and then.
That's right, yeah. So are we talking about this for the next four weeks, next two, or three, or four, or five? What space, what level does that make up a week? We, we're solving a traffic problem by creating and deleting traffic problems, so I'm just, just kind of curious.
Yeah, it's, it's not just, this would not just be for this year, and this is not just, um, again, this is also coming out of years of discussion of how do we get more parking for residents? Red large.
But it's kind of going back to, back to the point of, it's like giving U-turns out of the dark incidents into a road that's not parked, but it's your sidewalk. So if you, if you have, it's the land parks, they're going to get out of your space and then you, you turn.
Correct, yep, yes, just like at, um, actually, uh, U-turn, but, I think about sand hills and the difficulty of getting around there, yes.
This is, this is what I'm thinking of, travel through.
Yep.
The people walk down.
Yes. Just like Santos, correct.
But the rest of the summer, would you look into this, the legal alone that's on the, the parking lot, in a way to talk this?
We don't, we don't have that alone yet.
Yeah, it looks clear in the part.
The.
The, the space that you're talking about, the main thing where there's, um, you're getting, being here in the dock.
Well, the new area in lot one.
Lot one, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's spaces in the dock there now.
Right, well, part of that, of lot one is, is the chaos that's been consumed, that's up. Sorry, gentlemen, oh, sorry, this guy right here.
Yeah, hi, I'm Ash, ninety twenty grasshopper. I guess getting back to the point of what you're trying to accomplish here, which is, it's understanding, you're trying to make sure the lifeguard is complete as soon as possible to park. You know, people park in the parking spot, and you've got the number of spots right in front of the post office by the blue path. I mean, if those were being used for fifteen minutes of whatever they are now, why not just make those lifeguard spots right now? And then you can still decide what you're gonna do with the other permanent spots. And if really close, the lifeguards just walk right down there, as opposed to running, you know, the power of art is to come down the street, uh, to face travel for all of that, so it's just, there's no.
Again, I, I want people to also be clear, we're also not saying that we wouldn't add resident, uh, beach sticker lines. Not just, I know we'll talk just about this, this is expanded, because of people that have contacted us wanting more spaces. So I just, I want to be luminously clear.
It's funny, so if you took those fifteen minute spaces, those are the drop off spaces. So you're talking about family drop off, kids, and everything, those are the drop offs. If you make those permanent spaces, someone's parking them all day.
Uh, we're here in middle, and.
We saw this in one Blades Road. Can we stop selling out of town stickers? I don't know how many we sell, but we really don't have enough space for our own residents, so we pay a lot of taxes, a lot of taxes for them. And I also, if you live down the post office, I want to, you know, times have changed. It's not a post office, people live there, so you're stealing those, very respectful. I feel like we're giving way too many permits away, we can't even cover our own. Second thing I would be is, can we just put a space or a sign in front of those four lifeguard spots? Say, it's two hundred and fifty dollars, or whatever you guys decide, but make it astronomical, not a fifty dollar fine, make it two hundred and fifty bucks, whatever.
It's something, it's lose your sticker, it's, it's lose your rights.
So at this last town meeting, you did that. Yes.
You might want to remind them, you're only selling a hundred and fifty for non-resident stickers.
Well, it's.
We have a hundred and fifty one.
No, tell me, here, here, people, here's something, okay, yes, so number one, we did increase the fee to one, from fifty to a hundred and fifty. Number two, from ten years ago to today, we sell three thousand more residence stickers.
Eight thousand six this year.
Eight thousand six this year. Back in twenty eleven, it was four thousand four hundred. So there's thousands of people more that are looking for spots. The out of towners are ninety percent Lummerock for those folks who live in Marshfield, that are over there, and never mind the folks that are there. It's, and, and again, the ultimate reason is more access on a public road. Yes, actually, the blue and then the gentleman right there, I'm sorry, he's, that is the after one, yes.
Hi, Bill Graham, fourteen Philadelphia. On the, um, I've worked retail all my life, and premium parking spots for retail that is reserved for customs, and the employees park in a remote area out of the way, and that could be lot number two. Or it could be this walk area that's being developed, and let the, the general public park in most spots up in lot number one. In addition to that, on your, your area down, uh, Blades Road, one oh six down, that area, we've had a discussion in this chamber before, that there would be no parking in that area. That, that was a, was constructed when they put the seawall in in nineteen seventy-two. And from that time on, that area next to the seawall was used as a recreational area for the children and the joggers, the baby sitter, so pushing characters in a safety zone. All the way, all the way down to one thirty-seven, that, that's a safety zone, the kids play ball there, they, they, they catch, they do a bunch of activities.
Football, basketball.
And any, any kind of activities. And to have more vehicles down there would be bad. You can have the lifeguards down there, the next thing the people are gonna say is, okay, they're parking against the seawall, I can park there too. Now you've got a safety issue of the people parking there, how do they get back to the, to the Minnetonka beach entrance? They have to walk down Blades Road where there's no sidewalk. And once, I think that's almost a quarter mile, it could be a hundred and a quarter mile, the minimum that they park. The other thing, in that quarter mile, we have over sixty homes there, and there's a lot of activity in the summer months. The winter months, not so much, but the, the summer months is when the activity comes. The residents are there, the UPS trucks are there, the FedEx trucks are there, the trash trucks are there. We have four different trash trucks that come on four different days down that road, and they, they back down the road because they can't turn around down the end. It's a very dangerous area at times, and I don't think, uh, older before that this was something that wanted to go with, I don't know why they're changing now.
I agree, gen- uh, gentleman, yes, back there.
Hi, I'm P. Jennings, of Highland Crossing, the west end. Uh, I couldn't live further away from Minnetonka Beach, I live around the beach all the time. Um, I think in this meeting, I'll be the floor, if this is probably the floor I was discussing. The elephant in the room is the illegal body. Kingdom loves hot creatures. They come, they pop, did we dollars, it's less than you pay a cockerel for each time they take. It's not a term, it's a parking period, it's always. We got through the rest of the issue of like this, so we'll say, with the tenants, the only way to, the town has to take it serious. This is an old situation, I can know it hurts a lot of people. It's a big town, we need to take it serious. I'm good.
Well, number one, a hundred and fifty dollars is the due fine. Two, we're gonna be talking about actually attendance, and the beach commission, that's one of the things that we're gonna talk about, uh, your appearance. Oh, many good.
The high school kids still need, uh, community credits.
Oh, yeah.
Not only the high school kids, get community credit by attending the lots. Lots does nothing, they get credit, we get, I mean, I'm in those lots, it's gotta be twenty to thirty non-sticker cash a week.
I'd like you to come to that, to the, uh, beach, beach committee and, and help, I'll get that together, we know.
Let's do it, let's keep those through one night, where we have a cracky discussion, we bring people in. The positive reaction connects it, is a job or application.
A hundred and fifty dollar beach fine that we endorsed, that has to be approved by legislature.
Right, we're still waiting for the states.
We're still waiting for the state to approve that hundred and fifty dollar fine.
Yeah, that's what I, that's a fifty dollars.
But we're still waiting for that, but we can't find people until the state moves that.
Yeah, that's not gonna do it, it's hard, it's not selling, it's still up, like you turn the kids who perform hours of kids. I appreciate it, they can't even see this, it's, it's a problem, it's a problem.
Well, I'd say if you hear them here, yeah.
Uh, Michael Walsh, one oh seven Blades Road. Uh, I agree with many of the folks here that, for me, the biggest issue was the safety issue. I, my kids are grown, but there's tremendous amount of young children everywhere. And Mr. Chairman, you said yourself, are people gonna have to drive down the road with a U-turn? That goes against your own rules that you guys passed, section eleven, U-turns are prohibited. I've been there so many times, on the wall, seven of the walls, you are, are part of the U-turns, they're not residents, they're not guests, they might just be drivers down there, uh, you know, going for a nice drive, but it is a pinch point, you only have two options. You need to be on somebody's personal property doing a three-point turn, or you do a U-turn, right? And in the summertime, I haven't done any studies, but my guess is a minimum of fifty dollar tax a day, people do a U-turn instead. Uh, and it is a dangerous thing for the kids. Uh, and I think we're not, we're paying attention to Mr. Lombardos for, uh, lifeguards, and I can appreciate the safety that they need to provide on the beach, but we're really not thinking about children, what's gonna eventually happen to one of those kids when you're forcing more and more cars down there. People do see those four spots, I live across the street, any given day, there's four fishermen that park right there, hop over the wall, go fishing hours on end, never seen ticketed, towed, but nothing. So they're gonna know, move further down the road after past the, the, uh, the lifeguard spots. And before you know it, that whole spot is gonna be taken up, and it is gonna be a safety issue. So that's my biggest concern, is not being in a situation where we're all more breath for that, that some young kid gets hit by a car because of how much traffic is being forced in that beach port, thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrea Ross, I live at one thirteen Blades Road, so you're talking about right in front of my house. Um, I can say, I've been living there for two years, that, um, distracting this recreational zone is spot on. There are entire groups of kids playing football right in front of my house, it's amazing. There are groups of preschool students being led by a teacher, they're doing photography or something, or walking down the street very frequently. There are groups of friends, they're going out for walks, that stop in front of my house, and they just stop and talk to each other, they're in the middle of the road. Uh, we all are, when I walk to the beach, I walk right down the middle of the road. There are very few that strike on the street, it doesn't feel like a street, um, in that regard, there are people pushing characters, but there's a lot of casual social interaction that happens on this road. I'm a psychologist, so I guess this is really important to me, because I see our society, we're getting less and less of that at every turn. And so it feels kind of havoc to me, that I could take away these opportunities from these kids, adults, friends, you know, people having come to social gatherings, social contact, the things we're really struggling with in this society, this area provides for people, I see it every day. Um, for my own personal perspective, I appreciate that, I value that, I met neighbors just standing in the street, it has a different feel from other streets. Uh, and there are also purely safety issues, so if there are, you know, parking slots there, it's like they're going to be, all right, driveway, that's only for bringing a three-point turn into, uh, obviously that doesn't appeal to the, uh, property owner, uh, I feel, but particularly changing the park of the street. And it sounds like amazing work is being run on these additional lots. So by my count, that's forty-two additional lots that are currently being added. Could we not keep working on that, we see the impact it is? If we increased the cost of parking these spots, the path, the stopper, we had a paceable attendance, if it was a five-point line for these particular spots, I think it would take a season, but this would work. Um, deterrence does work, so we get the five-point follow-up line, we're parked, we're parked, I think of it twice, and that used to spread. But we do have additional spots coming down the page, it sounds like, so it doesn't seem like it's at the point where we would have to pull the string around something like this. And as other people have mentioned, once those four spots are there, I don't know why people wouldn't take those, just like they would even in their mind, not that they wouldn't just take those too, if they're having a couple of go-laws, some trouble there. And, um, I hope that our beautiful seawall doesn't become a whole bunch of, no parking! You know, I mean, my, you know, I look out at the seawall around, I have a good perspective, and I see that if there's all of a sudden tons of things written on the wall, and also just changes the feel of the neighborhood into this unprecedented, you know, from peaceful, beautiful spot to a stressful tow zone, the towing is happening, it would be happening in front of me. Also, as a psychologist, I work on, I, so peace and quiet between my work, there's, you know, cars and tow trucks and all that. For my personal perspective, that's also really discouraging and stuff.
There's one, oh.
Um, Christine DeGuerre, representing one oh nine Blades Road and one twenty-one Blades Road. Uh, our family has owned one oh nine for decades, so I grew up there, my children, my nieces, my nephews, there are many of us, I'm a street. Uh, reading memories, I spoke to Nick earlier, and I said I hope that I was to see the recreation department's name next to this line item, because the various fabric of that area along the seawall is for that region. It's a beautiful thing, it's joyful to see the kids being able to, to play, the neighbors being able to walk their dogs, to meet people, fishermen walking down, to see teenagers just being teenagers, and stuff like this, right? And so while I know we're solving a lifeguard problem, I'm also really building on what you're saying, that it's yours to use, and that's why you have a room full of people here. You're listening to the people that are writing the emails, and I, we're challenging you to listen to the people in this room who are raising the children that are going to be in danger on the street. With a lot of smart people sitting up at that table in our police department, in our recreation department, you've done excellent work creating almost double the parking spot there this year, we're gonna challenge you to find another solution. That's why we're all.
The, on the, uh, I just, I live on Blades Road. I have, I don't know if you have a core memory, but my core memory, it was only for, for six months, it was over the summer, from June, uh, through, through, uh, October, ten, fifteen years ago. The core memory was having my, my oldest first child ride his bike, the whole summer driving him to ride his bike. Had her pregnant, she was, her third trimester, she was pregnant there, one-year-old, uh, lived on Blades Road the entire time, whole summer. The entire time I was there, I was obsessed that other residents couldn't use that side of what we're talking about. I, with my pregnant wife, my one-year-old, and my, and be spending all my time on a, on a bicycle up there, I, I understand the argument. Personally, I feel more than safe, I trust our other residents that are there, that would, would be coming up into use. So, I understand, it is an awesome area, it's an amazing area. We're talking, if it's just the lifeguards or spots, and with DPW and, um, I think the police went out there, and they thought maybe you could add maybe, what, four others, so eight other cars?
But you're seeing, you're seeing, you're trusting residents that are busy in the parking lots and moving their vehicles already, and they're not respecting the lots that are currently there, they're just not. And they're not respecting the lots that are currently there, they're just not, so I don't see how that translates to trusting people that are gonna be parking in front of our homes. And endangering our, unhappy that even the remarries, our lives are, every day. That, you know, and, and.
And again, I'm also, I'm looking right by, by Sand Hills, I am so much more concerned and worried about the kids on that safety issue. And I wanna work every day with our public safety there versus what this mayor may have to do. That's my opinion, okay, that I'm absolutely, totally wrong? I'm just saying, my opinion, living in both areas, that this solution to bring more access to everybody on the road, that we, that all the taxpayers, everybody in town, paid for the water line, paid for the, every time it snows, everyone in town. And we're telling, and the retirement repair, and the seawall repair, we're telling the other residents, four to eight spots, no, you're not allowed. I find it very difficult on public space, not that public access, personally, my co-members may disagree. We have public access even without those eight spots, just to be clear about that, there's public access. So don't say that creates public access without public access. I respect your opinion growing up, it was nice to see the picture of that in parks there. We're starting up, we're opening up new, sorry, key words, I'm putting by grasshopper. I am full support of this, I couldn't imagine if you were even voting today to put eight parking spaces on grasshopper in front of my house? Because people need to park there to get them. I feel for these folks, you should not put parking places in front of their house. How many of these, how many of us live here today that have no parking in front of our house? Why are we making them do it? It's not fair, it's eight spots, we're creating tons more in the parking lots. You say it's unenforceable if people buy other places, that doesn't apply.
Um, I was thinking today about, about other issues now. And I couldn't think of one beach that has public or like dark parking area that, that's a dead-end road. So that's the main thing here, that will be like the glossing word, it's a dead-end road. And that's, hasn't been done in forever. And the eight cars, again, pinch point, that's just, it's made.
We're talking about, we're talking about the possibility, we're talking about the possibility. Uh, uh, hold on, sorry, that, if you go real, don't break that, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna, just one moment, then you get in on, after Steve Paul. Um, we made a comment, prompt driver to drive appropriately, and we, I can't tell you the number of times, especially obviously during the summer. Like Glades Road is going to ignore and what the signs, they're going on the block again, they're coming out of the street, getting on the streets, and seeing the sign right in front of them, and they ignore it, and they go. So, I know the safety issue would be, or, or truck, I mean, neighbor, or the driver, my opinion, and how obvious it is, or particularly those that live on the place and have kids up there, we walk down that street, we're completely walk without too much care, because it's open, you know, or like, throwing cars at a park, and U-turning, it's a bit of a, I just decided, that would potentially.
This is, yeah, and again, just because I'm led by other colleagues, sorry, again, we're talking, it's, I'll be clear about trust or no trust. Is it, if there's eight spots, if there's four spots, say, say there's two. So I think that's going to cause kids to get hurt, so I think, my personal opinion, again, you can think I'm terrible and awful. I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna be, wanna know why? Cause I asked, I'm not a public safety parking person, I asked our police chief, I asked our DPW, what's safe and what's not safe? I said, this, you know, here's what we can do, there are ways to make this safe. I trust them, they said, no. I'm saying, uh.
Steve's gonna make a withdrawal, but it's, I was sixteen, this is our safety issue. I, I, and a number of the people in this room, walk up and down Glades, Surfside, Glades all the way to the end, by the atmosphere, every day. And I second what Steve says, regardless that people race up and down the streets, their cars stopped for some reason on northbound Glades before you get to the, to the ramp, second to northern ramp, they just stop, and then someone decides to go around them. So you've already got safety issues, if you go back to what are you trying to accomplish here? I heard you before, the number one thing you're trying to accomplish is to have the lifeguards have a spot, that they're not, not gonna wa, not watching the water. So, and that's the main, you create other safety issues. And I think if you allow people to park in those four spots off by the seawall, they're gonna park all the way down.
You can tell the seawall.
Because unless the police are there all the time, they're just gonna park.
Yeah.
Sorry, but that's, that's the way it is.
I've got some new, some new voices here about.
And also, um, I'm really, I'm a grasshopper, uh, also, those four spots, I, what I heard are technically the lifeguards. But if they can't even enforce the lifeguard spots now, because you got property tenants or, um, even towing capabilities wouldn't work in this particular situation because, as the chief mentioned, it takes time, um, to get the towed up there, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not gonna solve the lifeguard parking situation, so those four spots.
We're gonna, sorry, at the back, then I'll go back.
I'll follow the other Pauls, not related, I'm Aiden Powell, Paulie Grab. I have a suggestion for the lifeguards, bring your lunch.
There you go, there's a four-spot, right?
I wrote the D, you want to go again, yeah?
I just wanted to mention, in terms of access and believe on their grasshopper, she Glades Road, uh, that we do have that. I mean, a lot of people who walk Glades Road aren't necessarily the residents who live right there. This is, this is a community resource that people do access, and to their job in adding these spots and including all of that, makes it that way forever now.
So Neil Javi, Police Road, I just wanna clarify two things. Number one, would a traffic study be conducted prior to all of this?
We, we had uh, DPW and um, police go out to survey the area, yes.
That's not, that's not my full time study.
Not a full uh, traffic study, now, I would ask Kevin, if seawall was done, was there a traffic study done?
Okay, yeah, fair experience, because I feel like that'd be extremely important, hard understanding the actual impact of what's going on here, because I know it's parked one way, but probably about twenty-five percent of the time, it is two-way, where it's ignored, first of all. And then, second is the volume, it's increased. And then the second thing I want to clarify is, first you said it was just four spots, or like, where parking? And now you're saying you need to eat?
Well, first I want to clarify, where, where's on the one, on the one way, which, which area, you're talking about the one way?
Upper D is.
On the upper, okay.
Yeah, so like, it has.
Yeah.
It goes just past there, yeah. So now is it four or eight spots?
To answer that, I want to speak for Andrew, to answer that, that's public space, it's a public, seawall's a public, waves, it's taken care of by the town, governed by the town. It's not private, and therefore, what we're saying is, and it's, yeah, we're, we're simply clarifying that there is space for a lot more than four cars. The town has a right to put parking up there, what do you want with it?
Yeah.
So what we're suggesting right now, and what I'm suggesting right now, is to stick with four lifeguard spaces, that's what we need for the safety of the beach. And there are reasons that we're suggesting that putting those, not just closer to the beach, but outside of the other public spaces, which are a root lock with lots of community mentality, is separate the lifeguards completely, because that is a more enforceable, more towable, easier accessibly for the lifeguards.
Right, and so.
It's closer, it's easier for the lifeguards to get to in front of lunch. That's why I'm making a queue, but it's not practical to say that our lifeguards have to bring lunch to, to the beaches, not like to go to all our counter plays. Um, and so putting those lifeguard spots by themselves makes it easier to post signage as such, makes it easier to, make it very, very clear as such. To answer that question, I'm not suggesting that we put parallel parking all the way up Glades Road, but the town has a right to do so. And we're simply saying that the DPW and the police have looked at it, and so the eight cars, to answer your question, comes from the idea that there are more spaces more available up there. I'm not personally supporting more than lifeguard spaces up there, because I do think if you start purposely allowing public spaces up there, you would enforce, you would start to fight more public people up there. I will push back on the idea that if you have, make four lifeguards going up there with a lunch shift, so that's eight cars a day. I'll push back on the fact that it seems the argument's trying to get pushed both directions. You're saying that there are a hundred UPS trucks, and Amazon trucks, and other cars, and all these people. Not to mention the fact that I count thirty-five homes just on this thematic plus Glades Road, so someday it's that sixty homes that direction. So, I'm gonna guess, there's more than one car per household up there already. You guys have to get to in front of your own house, now, I do trust you guys to watch out for your own children and your neighbor's children. But I also trust our four lifeguards to watch out for the people that they're trying to protect as well. So those eight cars that we're talking about coming in and out of the first fifty yards of that section, pulling and pulling out, I don't think is an unreasonable or onerous or exacerbating amount of traffic. And if we find that that eight cars, they don't have giant stickers on them saying, I'm a lifeguard, please respect everyone else, becomes a hundred and fifty other cars, I'm sure that the DPW and the police will be let know by the residents. I'm sure that there'll be people that will track that for us, because I believe you guys will be back. And I believe that the chief and everybody else that's on our force will help us enforce that in different ways. But I will push back on the fact that eight lifeguards in a ten-hour section coming in and out of that, is wanting to create the better for our listeners.
We, I neglected our folks online, I'm sorry.
Let's take care of them real quick, hold on here. Uh, Ms. White, you should be able to unmute, just your name, address, and go ahead with your comment, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Barbara Whitegurt, I'm at ten Cherry Lane, so kind of on the upper part. Um, I, I too have concerns, I see so many people driving the wrong way, coming back up the street and seeing kids narrowly missed being hit when they were crossing the street, because little kids assume it's one-way. It's supposed to be one-way, there's giant one-way signs. Um, so I, I also have concerns adding a U-turn with kids playing as well, even though it's a different part of Glades.
Thank you, thank you, uh, was it P, uh?
Yep, we'll find out, uh, Peggy Murphy, you should be able to unmute, just your name, address, and go ahead with your comment, thank you so much.
Hi, thank you, I'm uh, Peggy Murphy, I live at one forty-nine Glades Road. Um, thank you to the gentleman who shared his stories about growing up on Glades Road. It is a magical place, um, I've raised three children there, and I also grew up in Sand Hills. So, I have an affinity for Sand Hills as well, uh, until the gentleman in the back of the room. The major difference is Glades Road is a funnel, it is a one-way. We see hundreds of cars that joyride, they go out for a lovely drive, it is a beautiful street, they get stuck at the end. They don't know you can't go any further, they get, they get stuck down there, they kinda head up into the Glades, they get stuck, they back up, they have to turn around. It's a log jam, they're, they do it, they do it every day, they have to turn around in a person's driveway. Those driveways are not concrete, those driveways have to be replaced every year because they erode. This is going to happen, and I know you think that it is only, well, now it's up to eight spots. Um, but when those spots are full, the people are going to drive distracted, because they're gonna have kids in the car, they're going to be distracted, they're going to be looking for somewhere to park, they're gonna be frustrated, they're going to, A, cause another danger, they're going to be driving too quickly. We have actually had to put our own money and put in speed bumps in the road, because the cars already drive so quickly. So we now have speed bumps in the road, so they're caught, that's already happening. So this is going to exacerbate that problem, again, it's a funnel, so these cars are going to get stuck at the end of the road, again, more cars looking for places to park. And let's just say, as you've already mentioned, the disrespectfulness in an actual parking lot, I think, Nick, I think you said, they're driving over the cones, they're getting a ticket, they don't care, they're going to park along the seawall. And how are you then going to address that they're most likely going to use the end of the street, the beach, which is a private beach? So again, we're probably going to end up over utilizing the police, because we're going to end up calling the police often. So I think that that's going to overburden the police, they're going to end up being on Glades Road way more often than they want to, and it's going to cause a public hazard, because safety vehicles won't be able to get down the street, because it's just going to cause, again, it's a funnel, it's going to cause too much traffic, safety vehicles won't be able to get down the street, little kids on bikes. This, there has got to be, we are asking you, as the leaders of the town, to figure out a new solution for this. Thank you.
Oh, here we go.
Janearme, it's actually Dan Carney.
Oh, sorry, I was reading.
No, it's my wife's, it's okay, um, I'm at one sixty-one Glades Road. So, I, I agree with a lot of the commentary here, I think, you know, the lifeguard situation can be solved. And in fact, your proposal for the new Lot One has lifeguard spots in it that look towable. So kudos on that, and I like the parking lot plans. I think the, the issue though, is adding more and more cars that pass that opening where the, the uh, post office used to be. From, I live at the end of Glades Road, so for me, every day, you wait, really only one car can pass there at a time, because people use it as an unload to go to the beach. And so you wait, and you look down Glades Road to see, and kinda signal to the car coming the other way, who's gonna go first? And you navigate that very narrow spot uh, very carefully, particularly on a busy uh, day. I'm concerned that, you, you, you finally feel like you're out of the woods once you get to the spot we're talking about, because the road widens, and you're no longer trying to navigate two-way directions and, and signal the person coming the other way. I'm concerned that if we extend the pinch point, that currently is really difficult to navigate even further, then we're asking for even more trouble. So in addition to the extra traffic, people coming down looking for another spot, I think the assumption that because the road is wide there, it's safe, the road being wide there right now is what makes the, the part before it safe, and we're gonna take that safety away, I'm really, really concerned about that.
And, I don't know if the gentleman's, or, uh, woman's name, who's iPhone, I don't know.
Sure, iPhone, you should be able to unmute, just your name, address, and go ahead with your.
It was risky, you don't know what you're gonna get.
We'll find out, one moment. iPhone, you should be able to uh, speak, just your name, address, and go ahead with your comment, thank you so much.
Hi, um, my name is Kristen Putnam, and I live at eighty-one Glades Road. And I live right diagonally across from the beach entrance, and I see close calls with um, children and families and grandparents um, crossing the street every single day. Um, the gentleman who just spoke, I agree with that, it is very narrow, and it really does block, uh, it does block the, the road and anyone getting, uh, getting by. Um, there, there are a lot of people that do, just they unload, and um, multiple cars will just unload, so people cannot get around in, in either direction, and it is a two-way. Um, so, I, I think that there are a lot of safety concerns, it, it would be unfortunate for the residents of the area to have to um, you know, waste the police's time to, to ticket or, or tow. Um, I, I feel like that there's probably better things that the uh, police officers would, would wanna be doing. Um, so I, you know, I see it every single day, and it is not safe, and um, and so my vote is to figure out another solution. Someone mentioned having kids monitor the um, the parking lot, and I think that's a great idea. There's a lot of great beach communities in New England uh, who hire high school kids to, to monitor it, and yes or, yes or no? And it would be good for the, for the kids to have a job, um, and to. And it would be good for the for the kids to have a job and to and also support the situat residents to make sure that folks are not parking illegally.
Ms. Walsh, you should be able to unmute, just your name, address, and go ahead with your question. Thank you so much.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thanks. Hi, Beth Walsh. I am at one oh seven Glades Road. So my house is also right across from this area that we are talking about specifically. But I want to say about I want to I want to actually talk about the lifeguards for for just a second. Because a lot of our discussion tonight is about safety. And my entire career has been as a therapist, specifically working with children who have incurred life-altering disabilities. Both by, I hate to say near drownings, but as well as motor vehicle accidents. So I I am really sad to hear the difficulties that the lifeguards are having getting to the beach. It is so critical that we have those lifeguards there. As far as, but I also agree with a lot of the commentary tonight that just creating more lifeguard parking spaces does not in any way guarantee that that is going to be available for the lifeguards who really need them. I'm wondering if we can, I'd also like to propose an idea about perhaps finding ways to potentially cover lifeguards' life break, lunch breaks. So that they don't have to leave. I I know they need a breaks a break time and because they need to be alert. It's so critical. But I'm just wondering if there are ways that we can look at the structure of the lifeguard hours and coverage and break time. I'm wondering if we could get them a golf cart to help them be where they need to be with the equipment that they need when they need to be there. Because I think that is critical. I also am afraid about access in front of on Glades Road. Because that little bump-out area is already used, as many residents have already said, by a vast variety of illegal parkers. Illegal parkers know that space is there, and I don't think that designate, I I want it if the spaces have to be there. I definitely want them to be designated for our safety personnel, our lifeguards. However, I don't, I am so sure from sitting right across from these spaces every single day that they unfortunately will not be open for for our lifeguards when they need to be. I'll help because I want those lifeguards on the beach, as you can tell. But I'm just wondering if we can, I because and I hate to say, because I know and I respect and appreciate our town's safety personnel and our leadership so much. But I do think that this is also quite an enforcement issue because safety is so critical. And I I I'm just concerned that creating new spaces on a one-way road that does create, this will create more turnarounds on the street. And that people do fly down there. And and I'm I'm very concerned about safety, and I'm just hoping that we can find another alternative. Whether it be supporting our lifeguards' access to their jobs in a better way or whether we need more enforcement. Whether that be parking lot attendants or some of the other many wonderful ideas that have been brought up tonight. Thank you, everybody, so much for your ti- time, and I want to thank everybody for being in part of this discussion tonight. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Um, I appreciate everyone showing up. I love that we're still up for anything that we have. Usually we only have a couple people in the room. I do want to say, and I think I'm gonna echo what Nico said about our town police, including our lifeguards. It is their break time, and we are not gonna prescribe under any circumstances what they're gonna do with their break. They have a car. They should be able to leave and go do what they want during the prescribed time that they have a break. So I don't think we should discuss that. This is a public road. And I know we've talked a lot about safety, and when I think about safety, I ask our police to, and I ask the professionals about safety. And when they tell me it's safe, then I trust that it's safe. So I want to put that out there. I do want to talk about access because we have spent so much time as a board, this board, the previous board, the board before that I sat on for my third year. We've spent so much time on access, how to get people in situated more access to the resources that we have. Whether it's the beach, whether it's a spit, whether it's fishing, also this jetty, which I realize now is a thing that quite a few people do. Whether they're illegally parking or not, it's it's a great thing to do currently. So I just want, we work on beach access. We've acquired properties with water access. We will acquire additional properties with access. We are doing everything we can to get the most people in situated experiences on the water and close to the water. So I think a lot of this conversation, whether it's the parking lots, the two that we're renovating as or are changing, as well as this area, which is a public road that's treated as a private road. So I want to make sure. Parking-wise, it's treated private. And I want to make sure that we have access, people from the west end, people from, I mean, there is a problem with beach parking, I will tell you. I think there's probably this many people I've talked to about a problem with beach parking. Parking is like the number one thing people call us about, I will say. The number one thing that people call us about is parking. And I actually went, had the occasion to go to the beach recently on a Saturday at noon at mine at low tide. And it was packed. And it was packed. We couldn't find a spot. And there were probably ten to fifteen cars circling around. We couldn't find a spot. So there were probably ten or fifteen circling around. I had a sticker. Everyone had a sticker. They were circling. There were probably three or four without a sticker because I did look around. So I got dropped off. I got dropped off. Okay. I've listened to all of yours. My turn. I got dropped. I got dropped off, and my wife had to go home. I have a broken foot. That's why I didn't probably go home. And came back on a bike, and then we, when we left, we did the same thing. We have got to figure out how to get more people parking. And whether it's a lifeguard, and we're looking at, it's not for me, it's not an or, it's a and. It's like we're looking, we're doing a lot. We're doing another lot. There's also additional parking here, and maybe, maybe the lifeguards, maybe it's someone that wants to fish. I actually went there today. You know, there are two guys fishing there. Like, why? That's another place where we can give people access. We're fishing.
So I'll just ask you a question. Hold on, hold on. How many days, years, or months, or sir?
Oh, I know. It's a hundred days. The other access thing I can tell you is that we've made, we've changed the beach sticker stuff. We've also made the enforcement is from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So it's a hundred days, a hundred days where you need a sticker. And it's all, when it's after Labor Day, anyone can go there, and it's never free. It's never full, ever, 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 ever. So you can go in October, invite all your friends down and go to the beach. So that's another point we're trying to get at. My point is, I just want so everybody in town to be able to have access to our resources, whether they can afford a beach park or not.
We go, yeah, but we're in the gentleman.
So simply to add to the parking discussion. Right before this meeting, I rushed here from the whole Parkway Development meeting. And at that meeting, there were probably, did I remember, a hundred people there?
Eighty people there?
Yeah, seventy, eighty, anyways. And those and those, and I I take absolutely nothing away from everybody who spoke this morning. But in the room tonight, online, I'm assuming approximately ninety percent of those people are residents of this district. At the meeting, at the library, right before this meeting, there were people from all over town, every part of town, discussing whole Parkway. Every single person that spoke about parking said, please, for the love of God, put as many parking spaces as possible for our beaches. Including mine. They were talking about all the beaches. That meeting was about whole Parkway. There was nobody, there were a lot of people discussing different, really interesting ideas. Green space, park space, fun space, which are ideas that you guys are talking about tonight, kids playing. We favor that. fishermen using our fishing, we favor that. I'm in favor of everything that we want to do there. But in a meeting where there are people representing all of our town, everyone was clamoring for more parking in town. We're doing what we can with parking in town, including here at mine. We're asking to try and figure out if we could find four spaces specifically for our lifeguards to make it safer on our beaches. I am in favor.
We lost the plot a little bit. I think we're, yeah, we're talking about these four spots. And I personally have spent a lot of time down by Glades, and I don't think that it is safe to have, whether you're having diagonal or parallel parking down there.
I know. Gentlemen, sorry. Said at the beginning, let's go to the chase, and we do that. I walk the beach all the time. Everybody's there, and if you're walking, so if you put those parking there, everybody's gonna park. If you can't take control of what you got right now, it's not gonna happen. That's the end of the point. Everybody's on the beach drinking. And so now you got people parked over there, and you got little kids riding by, suppose. Someone's gonna make a U-turn and kill a kid. Oh, they go to jail. You never get that thing again. So that's really my problem. You know, I walk my daughter by the post office couple times, and there's drunk people coming out of there. Never mind, we have more, and I see people that are drinking. Now, not everybody, but they're getting involved, some of them. Sorry, it doesn't work when you kill someone.
I hear a lot of, I hear a lot of, I appreciate that. But I hear a lot of talk about all the other people that you're discussing going up and down this funnel that are not lifeguards. I guarantee you lifeguards aren't drinking.
No, not yet.
I understand that. I understand. But the the four lifeguards and eight cars a day that I'm suggesting that the recreation department and myself are discussing. They're not drinking. They're respecting your private property. They're turning carefully. And they understand ahead of time, because they are the four lifeguards, what we're talking about. I know you're talking about the next person. But you're already also making the argument, there are already a hundred and fifty cars a day going down the wrong way, one-way street, going too fast, doing all these things. The eight cars I'm talking about aren't the problem. If you think that the hundred and fifty cars that are already using your area are going to become five hundred cars. I respectfully disagree, but I have a solution to that, too. I said earlier in the meeting, if it's a danger zone, which it sounds like you guys all feel it already is a danger or something, it's gonna be worse. We can have the police start enforcing seriously the parking right now.
I said my house.
Ask the whole day mall. There's many police go by.
That's what I find so frustrating is that when we're talking about eight spots, what was our number one? You go into enter increasing want size as it is. I don't think you know how many days a year that actually is four or not. So let's give it a shot. And by the way, you can go into those lots any day of the week and find more than eight cars with stickers on them. So it's frustrating for us to hear it's about access. Well, it isn't. It's why do we need a new place for more cars to park to solve a problem that we can't solve in a park? That's why I'm so frustrated.
You have more lifeguard spots over there. Three, four spots, and you have a lot. And that's a small, again, this, we're talking three, four years. Look how difficult we're trying to have four spots for lifeguards. You can't. In a spot that our public safety deems safe, why not add four different spots?
Further away. Their lifeguards, they can walk from one side or the other.
It's a it's a public spot that we know. We're trying to find every inch that we can.
It just sounds disingenuous.
It sounds like you don't want lifeguards right there. The essential lifeguard parking. The lifeguard's parking.
I think I know you want lifeguard parking. I'm just saying it's frustrating when you're only talking about eight spots. When we know there's eight spots available that we're just not getting rid of the people without stickers. We're interested in access. You're allowing access to people who shouldn't have access.
A lot of people are talking about lack of enforcement. Chiefs here. Okay, so it's two first for two hundred and sixty-nine figures for parking. Number one, Peggy Beach, eighty-one. Number two, mine, seventy-seven. Yes, so the police do enforcement. We have a full staff. We have people doing enforcement, strictly beach enforcement parking. If not, it falls to the second level. The police do enforcement. I know I've talked to the board about this. I'll get a call that there's people parking down there that don't have stickers. First, we have usually one or two thousand. It's not eight cars without stickers. The police are doing enforcement, doing enforcement the best they can. They go through the parking lots on a regular basis. You don't have a sticker, we're gonna take it.
The reason why I love you want to. Because before, people just paid fifty bucks for the ticket.
The buyer's fifty dollars. That's set by state law. Our meeting has passed a request to the legislature to raise it to one hundred and fifty. Legislature hasn't passed that yet. I asked today for an update on it. Didn't get a response. But right now, we're capped at fifty dollars by state law. Very. And also, you will should notice, we're also likely, chief, telling my numbers off six, write down six officers where we need to be due to the lack of state aid coming in from the state, so.
Call your rabid.
If you call your rabid senator, tell them, please, want more enforcement, you need the money that they need.
What's gonna happen is, this hasn't even set a cheap, had to, you know, fifteen cars circling around. And what's gonna happen if they haul, they go back down Glades, and we're gonna end up calling the police, and you just say you're down six. And if for us, it is a safety issue, we're not calling them. We don't want a a high school kid parked there as a lifeguard.
Yeah, it's the rest. It's the rest that got to park behind it.
Next question about Lot One currently. For sure. The the, when he asked us, we're making the Lot One, maybe it's a question for chief. Are those elbow lots on the north end there currently usable, or is that only half the week?
We have not until now.
No access.
Stop the stop pay.
Is it where, who is not, who's not spoken?
Two on the. I'm sorry. He's, okay, sorry.
Two seagulls now, one's empty later. I keep hearing that only lifeguards are gonna be going to these spots. People are gonna love to see their car parked there. They're gonna drive down there to see if there's any other spots you can park at. Again, into the funnel, not being able to turn around. Then they U-turn, and now there's four or eight spots sounding wacky. So then if you need to tow a car, tow truck is down down there, past the eight cars. So now it's only said twelve cars that we're probably looking at here, including a tow truck that is taking the room. A crying tow car that might not be a lifeguard. People love to see more spots. They're going to keep going down that tunnel to get, to find that it's not there. And again, turn around, more traffic jams.
It's again, to me, part of that points to the to the first, so many of our residents looking for access to the beach that we don't have.
Right. Well, I agree, that's an issue, but it's going to keep causing the issue of keep people coming down there who are no odds on whole park.
So keep on saying, this is public, a public road that we are utilizing. I don't want utilizing it because this issue has been brought up. Same tag one, my research, twice, last one, seven fifteen. Same thing, they went part to part of the same spot. Guess what? We got online, board, former board voiced the same concerns that you're hearing kind of. And it was, that's why it's not being utilized. Because guess what started going down the place? With the same concern, well, the last board.
This is probably, oh, sorry. See, see if I understand. I had a couple of questions, maybe my favorite, chief. There are four spots right on the beach wall. I don't know if that number is on related to the road, but if you're looking at condominium.
There are four spots right on the beach wall, I don't know if that number is on related to the road, but if you're looking at condominiums, the pathway, there are four spots right on the beach that are, are those four spots, those four?
They're the beach artists.
Okay, so there's four spots right there, why not with signage, designate those, like, I don't know. And my question is, how do you know what a lifeguard car is? Do they have stickers? So designate lifeguards, sticker on their car, those four spots, we already have them, they're total. With the lifeguards there, you have five spots in the lot, lot one, because lifeguards won't use those anymore. So you're netting one spot, you got four stage spots for the lifeguards, and it only impacted areas of the residents. You're saying you're, it's an issue. You end up with one extra spot, but the lifeguards get access and they just get all the spots.
To clarify, you're talking about the spots that are the north end of the strip, not the south.
North end, north end, where you pull the pathway, the four spots right there.
It's not that hard. They do that all along the beach road, they're, they don't put it in spots, people are driving off all along. Yeah.
And because their residents trying to actually delete.
Oh, yeah, they are, I was wrong. You guys are driving out like. Yeah, like a single frustrating experience. And the person in front of me was. But we are getting.
Hold on, there's, first, and we're gonna go here, and then there's, uh, someone back.
One, one, two, one thing I wanted to echo that somebody said earlier on, and I, I respect access. We're really being single-minded about access in a sense of parking. The entire town accesses that way along that sea wall, almost as high law, to enjoy this, to walk up through the waves, to search for speed last on that beach. It's not just four cars. I'm hearing what you're saying, if there's any cars, there's gonna be as many as you can. And then beyond that, it's gonna be those who are then believing doing that. You're putting all of the people who are currently accessing that road in danger. And you're taking away their access and pushing them into this. So I think you really need to, we're challenging you here, and you're, I, I don't think you're as open-minded as you need to be, and you're thinking about just access in sense of parking. And you're not thinking about how much the town uses it, and we all see it, we sit on our porch every day. We see each other, and we see a lot of people that we don't know as well, using it, and riding their bikes with their family without helmets on, because it's safe. And without that stretch, and even if it's just four cars, let's say we're conservatively just parking a lifeguard there, there's sight distance, sight line problems, and I respect who's chief, DPW, but without an in-depth traffic study, this is detrimental to anyone that is accessing our public road for their enjoyment, right?
Sure, one moment, yes.
Uh, John Corrigan, I know it's my significant date, road, which is a public access, and to your quiet respect, the possibility. I, there is an enforcement on this road, it is not supposed to be going all the time, access the beach. It is, it's a key obstacle from there, it's dangerous. I continue a traffic study at Lake Road, and I'm really here. It's all area with my neighbors, because I know what we do, they love to see. And I have my heart in my throat half the time, just sitting on my front porch, because there are pelotons out of my verse, the best ones. And then there are the kids, and then there are the huge SUVs, four to five, parked at the end of my road, off of, you know, grasshopper glaze, probably a collie or two, unhappy, all their little kids are running around. So when you talk about access, let's talk about safe access. You can't create more parking in a wide beach area beyond maybe these forty-eight spots that we're doing it, that was a safety. I mean, if you start buying private property and raising our houses that we park on there, access looks different. So can we get, people use captcha, we can figure this out, I'm not against access. But what I'm telling you is downright scary what we see on hourly basis. And it starts at six in the morning, and it ends at nine. And that is the reality, and I think our practice, who else would say the same thing? But you're trying to give us this false equivalent, so that we're trying to like cheat people out, that's not what we're saying. We're saying we already have a safety issue, and we're pointing out that that is the main problem.
And I could please follow up on that, because we are going down to Chief's, and I hear what you guys are saying.
For the, I see, I almost forgot, name and address for the, uh.
Uh, no, my people, sorry. We live in a chaotic situation, and so you guys wanna compare it to getting dropped off at the beach, and everybody should have fair access, but what you're not understanding is that people in this neighborhood are already living in chaos. And what's happening is you're making up all more fear at home about further expansion. And then I think that's what the big problem is here, is everybody's more afraid of where it's going to go also. Because you are saying, oh, it's a public road, and we have to strike and all that, but you're not hearing us on it, already chaos, it's already dangerous. When you're there living it all the time, you're creating more fear in us, or how much more chaos, it's very scary for you.
I'm confused, is it chaotic, or is it safe, kids are not using?
That's why it's chaotic, because it's not safe, because there are cars.
No, kids were.
We live on, we live on.
And everyone's playing football, and it's lovely, or is it? Which one is it?
Please. That's all.
Did everybody say the same thing?
But you're not listening, you're not.
The long way to the town, the first one, the last one, the first class time. The, uh.
I just wanna clarify, she is, we are not talking, she does not live in the area you're talking about adding spots. She's making, she lives further up, so to clarify, she's talking that it's chaotic there. Yes, and she doesn't want it to be more chaotic down there.
Right. Yes, that's.
That's an issue, I think.
You have, uh, a motion, or?
Can I just add a question? Is your question just on the?
A quick, a question, yes.
I don't think, it doesn't seem to be any critical to me for this. You have twenty-five more spaces, everyone is giving you suggestions about alternatives. So why don't we just kind of take it, give you a formal traffic study for one, for the section you're parking in. And get people's feedback, because I think before you follow all these cars down there, you're gonna have to explain to us how, how the turnaround. So I don't think you can handle with four spaces, you know, you're a little bit close to her, but I don't see any reason for your assistant to have to pay for this stuff. You got twenty-five new spaces, you got the extra, you know, bummer, designate that, designate that as the lifeguard part, not the cross.
Yeah, the twenty, the, the twenty-five is not, that, again, we're, we're, if, hey, that's five years in, in, in the making, it'll be, hopefully next, uh, next, next year. Again, and even use extra spots, people are right, it's not gonna solve, and we're making a dense, um, it's a little crowded. Now, now, part of this too, um, as a board, I, I tell everyone, we have been wrong. We have made mistakes, and we're willing to see if, if this goes forward, does not go forward, if this is terribly chaotic, more than willing to say this is bad idea, look, this is not set in stone, this is not, resent a stone.
What if, what if we propose four and we evaluate it somehow?
Oh, I have a motion that's, that ties it back to the public safety officials that will determine what spots are real. I don't know, there's no number of spots given here in my motion, because I want, I want to go back to public safety. So let's not determine what's in this, it's four, it's five, or it's whatever, it's public safety, yes.
Okay.
I've had it before, I had an eighty, W, twenty grasshopper, you have this nice gentleman here, who's gonna talk to this nice gentleman, half the high school kids, give it a go, why not do that? You're gonna put those four in, and you're gonna have problems in forcing it. So why not table the four things, have these guys talk, set up the kids, and go from there? I mean, if you have a kid walk up and say, hey, that's a lifeguard spot, you're gonna get towed, most people are gonna leave. So they'll have their lifeguard spot, this is, all this is about is a place for the lifeguards to park. So why is this training, you said, you know, I would say table it, get these two together, move on.
And a motion?
Sure, okay.
Move the select board to approve the addition of lifeguard situated beach sticker parking along the sea wall in the approximate location of one on nine Glaze Road, with number of parking spaces, location, and signage to be determined by public safety, DPW, and the Recreation Department.
Okay, second. Second.
Yeah, so the three, one.
Yeah, it's scary, it's really scary.
Only a plain beach sticker.
Why are we here?
Yeah, why are we here?
Why are we here?
You guys already made your decision, why?
Why did you even have a script?
Why are you open-minded to exploring, like, either?
Three S's. Yes.
Very scary.
You guys just take a vote.
I'd be S, one yes, yes, three S's, yes and no. Yes, you have all these.
Four S's.
One no. Why has?
Fastest four of them.
Why, you think?
Why have we?
Why are we?
Yeah, I'm listening to things that's been said.
Why are we here?
I, I'm listening to everything, everybody's saying.
I'm not.
I didn't hear a statement from you.
We're done on this thing.
Nobody here voiced support.
I understand, you haven't, but you haven't also heard thousands and hundreds of phone calls from other residents that want access to the water.
So are you gonna tell them?
All motion for those laws, we gotta.
So those are the parking laws.
That's not what they're asking for.
Thought it was about lifeguards, no, it's, I thought it was the lifeguards.
You're all changed.
No, we can fashion it up, we actually set it up, we have a space, it's open, and no cars standing.
Let me just move, I can't.
Well, that's it. We have to go. So.
There's a.
Everybody, it's, you know, everybody's listening.
Yeah, there's a, there's a problem with that, uh, motion that you just said, that the, the motion of, that could increase the stickers of those, that would be a stick in the area, you didn't say it was reserved for lifeguards.
I said lifeguards situated beach sticker parking.
There's no such, there's no such thing.
So the beach.
First of all, promotion red, with signage, and stickers, to be, to even decided and posted by the DPW, it's a one safety. Yes, it's in the way.
So what are you gonna do?
Second. It's been motion seconded, voted upon, passed. That does not mean we don't listen to the residents, or everybody in this room, listen for almost an hour and twenty-five minutes.
You argue that it's.
You argue, you argue with us too, so that can be in both ways. Correct, we're listening to every single person who spoke to, I listened to every single person who spoke to me. When we talked about four versus eight, I said specifically, I'm not for eight. When we talked about safety, we're talking clearly and extensively about safety. The chair just specifically said before the vote, this is not some kind of, we're not putting these down in gold leaf. This is something that we can assess and revote on again in future meetings. This is not, this is not a, uh, you know, a steamboat. We specifically called this meeting to hear from the residents. The fact, that, the fact that ninety-nine percent of the residents that are here for this, I am this evening, tonight, happen to also do this, was all citizens who live.
They live on, the other side of.
They happen to live, but it was a four mile here, and happened to have a safe from property, and happens to live here. Does not mean when that all people, people who write in, email in, call in, talk to our state, our security officers prior to this, to live in other parts of town. So please understand, this isn't the first time we have an issue come to the board, or it's strangely coincidence that the people that are butters and within fifty feet of that area are always the people that are here for the meeting.
I understood, but very typical, very true.
I get it, right? So we do appreciate it, I appreciate it.
I get that, right? But if you turn the point around, nobody who are non, the other ninety-nine percent that are here, they chose not to.
And that's not a comment for any of these situations.
But that's, it's common, it's common, so most of them.
They're not here, right?
It's not the first time, I don't care about four guards. It's not the first time there's an issue that comes up in town where just those fifteen people that live want that one road. We were talking about putting, uh, you know, a public parking garage over in the west end, you think that it would be the people in mine at the show or the people in the west end? I guess all the same, it shouldn't be relevant who comes to the destination. So you telling us it's relevant. That's actually, that's actually. No, that's correct. What I wanna make sure is clear is that we are here to listen to you. We're here specifically to listen to you. Listening to you doesn't necessarily mean agreeing with you or changing our opinions, just because we took the time to make sure we're open-minded and listening. So, so I actually love the idea about the, the new service hours.
But why don't we try?
And then why would we just change some of the order then?
We, we have not changed.
Now, now, we put it all again.
But why, my, so, well, what, what is the process?
I, I.
No, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I'm asking for everybody in this round, if everybody else is, because I've heard you both say it twice now, that there are processes or other scenarios in which this is set in stone, and we can all vote again, and if we didn't get a vote in like you did, and you will have a vote, I'll agree. What is that process? When does this come back in front of you? What are the next steps, when are they happening? And how can we be informed of that, so that doesn't just happen on my?
So, I guess, there's two things I'm gonna say about that. Number one, what we're doing right now is, after, after going, I'm highly amused, and I wanna tell you why, I want you to. I don't want you to think that we don't care, or we're not listening. And I wanna make sure that you realize that, if there, if you are seeing that, that, uh, these spots are being abused, and there are more and more issues. And I wanted to be clear, where, where I felt, I didn't wanna hide where I felt that I thought would be anyone pulling punches. So I want to tell you ahead of time, if this becomes an issue, and in a, in a month from now, and you have all these reports, and you're telling the police, and the police come back and say, this is awful, this is terrible, we can, we can change this.
No.
We're agreeing.
What, yeah, and you can, and say, this, this is the term of process, you contact, you contact us.
What's the official process, like, where we do that?
You, you email, you email us as a board, and you email Nick as well, to see, we'll proceed the beach, uh.
And then you guys are gonna decide if it's important, I don't know, one phase meetings, peruse your decision?
Correct.
Oh.
My last one, Mike, because we really are supposed to, we're not supposed to be doing this, this is not.
Win Fargo Ocean Ave. I am joking about this for years, and I'm volunteering, give me a ticket book, I will fill it in a day.
Yeah.
That's right.
I will fill it in a day.
Yes, all right.
I just, just to follow up on this, if it comes a problem with the police, I actually had to follow up for, over the, the chaos of the traffic and double parking and the road being blocked. The problem with that is, by the time the police can get out there, somebody is shifted, somebody moved, they're not giving the ticket because the person has finally left, you know, twenty minutes later, a half hour later. So what's happening is the chaos, there's guests, there, the police come through, well, it's too late right now, but in the meantime, it's happening nonstop, fifty times a day, in front of all these houses, so that's, it's easy to say, easy to say.
It's unlikely to be.
On to, I've got, I'm on my seven thirty agenda.
I know, but.
We're on to the open, number third, twenty seventy-five, special community, we're, Nancy, no, my ass.
You want mine?
I don't want mine.
Have a good night, everybody, take care.
Yeah.
All right, see ya.
Alright, see ya. Alright, you can start.
You want to make some feedback?
Um. Do we do? Do, do we have any lead, leadays on the boards? Let's, let's move on to that before.
Is he in the bathroom or is he talking to people in the hall?
Why don't you do the drain layer?
Drain layer. Do we have a motion for, what page is that on?
Want to have any one for it?
Please.
Move to approve drain layer license for speaking in at the station.
Second.
Uh, here you go.
All the paperwork.
Move by the, just go with the second, uh, by.
Yeah, all the paperwork's in.
All the paperwork's in, this is like.
But this Harrison's.
The board has, uh, all the, all the, all the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four.
For the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes is, is good.
Second.
Second.
Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five.
Uh, Mito wasn't here today, didn't.
He was the I. He was.
You said I, you're meeting.
He was.
The one who was.
We approve the drain layer.
Oh, you weren't here.
So the, uh, item I have for the board is to open the warrant for the November third, twenty twenty five special town meeting with a variety of potential weapons, C P A, and other items right now. Uh, we have eleven potential articles that may come to work. And then once the, the board decides to open, if there are any other articles that count for, petition articles. And then the board, so chooses that following meeting, they, they may close the warrant. And the board basically go to settle more on November third.
Alright, questions?
Is it Dog's birthday? I don't know if we can have, I'm getting a man of its birthday.
Yeah, I think we'll make this consider a gentleman.
This is just the opening of the man of its birthday.
Just the open so while people start.
Move the select board to open the warrant for the fall special town meeting S P M to be held on Monday, November third, one twenty-five birthday.
And we mentioned, you want to say that by, uh, Freda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Committee of renewal.
We have somebody from Sister City, Sosio, remember that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Should we link?
Yes, we can.
Was she here at the letter?
Yeah.
She was here today?
No, she's, she kept her list and then. There's no one else. There's two, it's a one for one. No.
Is she, has she, not a ree.
No, she's new, but she's still in town.
Is she moving to situate?
She was, she was here at the last meeting. You guys spoke about her briefly, probably a little after. Um, she missed her time slot, we're gonna be. Okay, I don't think you're happy.
Do we take people from other towns?
We can't. Does she have a, some, of course, your opinion? Well, you're allowed to.
I mean, as far as.
We have to, yeah.
I think it's okay, we have the power first for other like, over, uh. I think that would be.
I would suggest. We don't, we don't.
I wouldn't just.
I want to approve Mary Currents for the Sisters City City South April three.
Second, I, uh, first by, oh, uh.
Good law. Cause you have two other ones.
Oh, yeah, you can do that.
Yeah. I don't see that.
I'm totally lost on what we're doing then.
You should have a motion.
I don't work here, I listen to.
Why never here?
Um, no, just like.
Alright, let's just do this one. Um, moved and seconded, all in favor of Assistant Marie appointee.
Aye. Oh, moved, remove Matthew Chase, Assistant Marie, in term of three years until, uh, sort of date. Moved to renew Marie Clarity to the Sister Harbor Cultural District Committee for a term of two years or until, uh, sort of date.
You move, uh, Slavo? Second by, just go more all in favor. Aye, aye.
That's one motion.
Yeah, so you're moving on. Alright, now we have, we, oh, the leaders on the board, you got a little bit, wanna tell us about, Will Parker, right at that though? You're on the spot.
Oh, sorry, um, I, I got a little bit late, but it was a good meeting, it was well attended. Um, there was a healthy discussion that was very light and calm. Um, there were people there from what I could hear comments, all over town. Um, in general, there was a very strong feeling that there was some good ideas, that there was a lot of, uh, interest in making sure that we kept as many parking spots as possible in whole parkway area. There was a lot of discussion, as I said earlier, that parking is a pretty imminent situation, always has a particular meaning, even though we keep trying to improve it, and then we should try to focus on that as we make those follow-up cities. Uh, and I've got the presentation, uh, that I thought was good, and I, especially the commentary that's forty-five, uh, today, it was very clear, concise, you understand it, we're lovely, they're a job, we ask your questions, and I'd please, uh, close this.
Did they report it?
I think so.
No, but I think.
Yeah, there was a camera.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't live, it wasn't.
Okay, good.
That's right, so, very cool.
I toured the water treatment plant on Friday and Saturday. It was very exciting, I was very excited to be there. It looks sort of like it's gonna be a water treatment plant. They're, um, on schedule still for Christmas Eve. And they're just starting to put the structural steel up, so it was all very exciting to me. Um, the Water Resource Commission is meeting next week with Captain Jim to talk about the Adona technologies for potential E cell, uh, with water, um, water treatment plants. And the planning board is working on storm waterways and they meet on Thursday and will be interviewing two people for the alternative show.
Yay.
Here, good.
You have a.
I have a little set.
I have a couple.
I have four, uh, that's good, yeah.
So Mordecai Lincoln, um, sent some, or perhaps the C P C, one hundred and five thousand, that was approved. Um, and that's, um, there's some, they said some foundation issues, and this is all from the report. Uh, the main house for Mordecai Lincoln. Um, and then also the folks, the statement, sorry, not statement, what is the name? That's people in my, uh.
And some preservation group?
No. Anyway, the preservation group doing, the work was out there and actually has some interest in the old building. They get, they get. No, it's not, it's, you have to, gee, you guys. Anyway, there is some interest in the old building, they actually found some, um, metal equipment under it, but it, so, um, there is more interest in that as historic building. So those are two updates from that. And then, um, Waterways was quite an independent meeting, there was a meeting for Waterways about the Harbor Master Building, and there were quite a few people, and that is actually, uh, you can view it online. So it's posted, um, specifically the cost of the Harbor Master Building. Um, and there's still some work to do on that. Additionally, the Waterways Board is working on a five-year plan, which is what we asked them for before you all started, so just letting you know. We asked them for a five-year plan on fees because, um, Waterways, we had an increase fees for like eight years. I know. So we need a more of a kind of five-year plan.
Graduated.
Graduated plan, and so we needed increased by the. Um, so they are working on some, gosh, some five-year plan as well as potential other ways to get it. And so we will have, they're still on track to get that in the early fall, late summer, and the reason we need that is to, that would be going for the increase rates, right? To know about people, um, around that time. So we're pushing toward that, so we should get that.
John G, wait.
Me, yes.
I have a copy of the plan and the process estimates for the, the Harbor Master Building at my desk. I gotta wait till I, so I'm gonna look at it, I'll also try to.
Yeah, I'd love to get a, like, electronic copy of that.
Did they get rid of that closer?
Still in there?
There's a couple options, yeah.
Coast Guard, last one I looked at, had about two million dollars. We will be asking a federal part, it's a part of that. Reality, my opinion is, you don't do the Coast Guard, the Coast Guard will, it's, it's, yeah, said, okay, if you build that building, I guess you know who it was, so. Uh, but we'll be asking, it was very successful as Representative Keating's office mentioned last time. We're about the only town that's got two direct federal appropriations in the last couple of years. So we'll be making up for that, both he and Senator, uh, and a Senator, I was on the Coast Guard appropriations, so. I feel pretty confident with this federal part for that one. And a couple others too.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, that's right. Uh, so say it.
I, I'm saying, if I actually connected with at least more than half of the, it's a bad. Uh, we have a case for committee, uh, committee, uh, machine. Um, we did a lot of those, uh, nice getting at the Maritime Center as well as in front of town, all of these, uh, so that was really nice. Um, uh, they were present at, I don't know, the economic problem question, uh, just last night. Uh, and, um, I did have a question which, you know, later, uh, who actually takes care of the land saving, not the law, or outside of old games rec section? So there was a question about that, I'm, I follow, definitely, uh, who did I ask about it? Doesn't seem to be, I don't think, but it doesn't, we, the case, so, uh, actually. Um, the, uh, what part I talked about, uh, Shark, um, is close to finishing all the permitting, which they'd have to wait to finish for grant writing process to that happen, so we tried to finalize their appropriations there. But they are moving forward, uh, which is pretty important, uh, actually. The central chamber, um, a lot of discussion, and, um, obviously Eric DeJace is coming on, I know there's been some updates from other directions. Um, I was, uh, really impressed with the way that the new committee running Eric DeJace has really rethought the, the whole, whole concept of, of Eric's, the other, uh, they, they talked at length, but I thought it was important to note that, uh, kids areas gets tense if they're putting out butter and we expanded it. They're really, we became how to engage families, small throughout Saturday and then Sunday, not just help sign, send, send finance team music. Uh, they're really doing things, and a new wave this year, which I know that multiple operations over the years, but we're really trying to tie in, uh, they're calling Art Alley there, uh, the alley of the cloud, uh, it's moved, uh, the art house pizza background to Otis. Uh, they, uh, they expanded some of the, uh, the way, the way that they thought of center layout, uh, they put a lot of effort into, uh, just to know, uh, public, uh, side of things, that the kids and families that you open ten to four on Saturday ten to two, possibly later on Sunday. Uh, music would be Saturday, eleven to eight, yeah, and on Sunday, eleven, it's seven. So, so, thanks.
I have one other thing I totally forgot, zoning board, uh, George Seaton stepped down as chair, uh, and also stepping down off the board. Uh, so if you know anybody who would be a good, um, zoning board of appeals person, that would be great. If they always have homework, it's a tough board to be on, and Chris Karshia is now chair. So just a call to him. And I thank George for his service.
What?
Did he step down from Capitol? Chris?
No.
No, he's on to you, he's gonna be on.
Was he the chair of Capitol?
Spies on the chair, yeah.
Wait. Step down.
Not that I wore, I talked to him today.
It's not a line around the corner to be on zoning board. I wish there were, it's a tough one.
Alright.
Do you know any lawyers? They really need a lawyer.
Do you need a lawyer?
They do, I'm just saying, the others are, you know, construction and another, I think it would be.
Correspondents. This was second to me, personal, but I just would wanna comment from Brenda O'Connor, we presented her with, uh, recitation. Um, and she just had nothing but great words to say about appreciating what we did, surprised her with that. And, um, it just leaves a very love for situ, I saw this say that, that. One, one of the women. As far as other correspondence is concerned, a lot of the people that were expressed their concern tonight are, were also expressed in correspondence, uh, Maureen Conlon. Uh, I'll give this to, uh, Charlie for the address, and Anna Green. Person named Tricia at one oh nine Glades, Ariana De Cellis, Kristen De Garavilla, Doug Sheeran, and Peter McCarron are all on the same letters about not agree with the motion that we did pass. Uh, if you can read them if you like. Then we also have correspondence from Chris Karshia as Capitol Planning Committee Chair, wondering why uh, the chair of this committee is the liaison to Capitol Planning and suggesting that perhaps one of the newer members should be considered for that. We've already voted accordingly on that, but it's just an opinion, uh, that's fine, we discussed. And then, uh, we still have, uh, some that we need to take care of. Uh, appointment for the M B T A Advisory Board, you know, communities on that. Specifically because their meeting on Monday, so we need, one of us has to be there, who'd like to do that? There's a Monday.
I'm on the town.
When is it? Next Monday?
Yeah.
This probably Monday, coming next.
I would love to help, but I'm on the town.
You have a time? What time do you need? Probably not for so, yeah.
Nine.
Not in the morning.
No, in the morning, I have nine to eleven.
He said nine to.
Nine to eleven, I have.
I'll, I'll be there.
Where is that?
We're just in the central area on Monday, seven twenty-eight, complete with our communities, we also have an opportunity to come to Situation B to you and our members as well, as of now, we are scheduled to go to Halem Hall in Cohasset from nine to eleven thirty-ish. This is for Hannah and Deputy Director.
So we're waiting around?
That's very vague.
Yeah, you're waiting there. Jim's gonna be.
That doesn't.
Get back to us.
That doesn't work, okay.
And to.
Two hours.
If we could narrow the time, if we could narrow the time down, I could, I could find home. So I'm not traveling, but I don't wanna, you know, I'll be, I'll be off at the house.
Alright, I'll leave it at that.
Is there anywhere we can find out when they're on the way or?
Yeah, we can ask them to let us know when they're gonna be.
Need a shorter window.
Approaching.
Yeah.
Do they come via train?
No, they're probably, I mean, all in there, it's in four hours.
Alright, you have our executive session, so, uh, during, uh, uh, I have a, Eric, thank you. Um, I've said this twice.
Yes. You hit it right. That's it.
Chair declares that the select board will be doing an executive session pursuant to clause six of the meeting law, the purchase changed lease or value of real property. The chair also declares that the select board will be doing an executive session pursuant to clause three of the meeting law, strategy with respect to litigation. That's for open, open lawyer. Um, so here's my motion, move that the select board go in executive session pursuant to six of the meeting law, consider the purchase, exchange each lease with valid real property. The chair may declare that open meeting had detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the select board of not agreement to meet in the session. Further move, the select board move to the executive session pursuant to clause three of the meeting law, discuss strategy with respect to towns. Patient, plaintiff, national opioid, multi district litigation claims, the court chair may declare not meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's litigation position before we not agree to meet in the session.
Second.
Uh, this prepares.
Roll call.
You guys do roll calls.
Mr. Povich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Billmore.
Aye.
Mitch Flago.
Yes.
Dr. Francisco.
Yes.
Nikki Anas, I'll give her.